Hi, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of September 18th, 2013. Tonight, we have Tim Howard, Christopher Rich, myself, I'm Harry Locatilia. Howard Snyder is our planner, and Wendy Beaumont is taking the minutes. Sorry for the delay, we're just now starting. It's seven, what is that, 7:42, and the meeting is called to order.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would move that we accept the vouchers as presented with the caveat that the voucher for, it's 124?
124 Tenny Street.
124 Tenny Street, in the amount of $90.18 to be paid for by the Planning Board and not by the applicant because there was, it had to be re-noticed, and the oops was our fault. I don't think it would be fair to charge the applicant.
I'll second that.
And the total is 76624.
Yes.
And Tim seconds. Any discussion on the, on these? These are pretty straightforward. Having none, all in favor of accepting the vouchers, ban of vouchers, total is 76624 with the stipulation Chris mentioned. Say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also move that the public hearing scheduled for 7:30 this evening concerning Park and Recreation be taken out of order for the purpose of approving the requested continuance.
I don't see a problem with that. We can do that by general consensus. We will now open the public hearing for, what's the address? Seven, what is it? East Main Street?
East Main Street.
30 East Main Street. East Main.
It's not 30.
East Main Street Outdoor Active Recreation Facility.
Rec Facility. Okay, we're now opening that hearing, and there's a motion, motion to, I'll, I'll move that.
Extend the time.
Extend the time. Time for decision.
Is it to October, October 8th?
The Form H.
October 9th.
The Form H is to December 31st.
Go to December 31st.
Go to December 31st. I'll second that.
Seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, unanimously, I would further move that the majority of the board here authorize you to sign in place of the clerk.
Motion to sign the Form H.
The Form H, yes.
And by the chair for the clerk. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Where is she? There you go, Howard.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have you finished, honey?
Not yet, I'm working on it. That's right. Oh, you now. Okay, with that done, I'll now hear a motion.
To open the public hearing.
No, to continue the Park and Rec.
Could we do that?
Hearing. Howard, it would be a good day to move that out to, to all conflict with anyone. To continue the public hearing for the recreation.
The first Planning Board meeting in October.
October 9th.
Is that going to be adequate amount of time? I'm thinking the second, the second, what's the second meeting in October?
Second meeting in October.
What is that? Do we know?
The 23rd.
10/23.
October 23rd?
So moved.
2013. Motion by Chris. This moves to continue the public hearing to October 23rd, 2013, 7:30 PM. Second for that, Tim? Seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Great, that's done. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that we open the hearing on Osrd Development, Lisa Lane, preliminary.
Yep, that works for, that works for me. Hereby opening the, opening the public hearing for Lisa Lane, Osrd, and preliminary. Do you really want to say anything? Or do you just want to ask for continuance so that you have the supermajority that you need for us to vote on this?
Well, it's preliminary, we don't need a supermajority.
It started as a special permit.
Right.
I thought that myself, but...
Yeah, but we stopped, we actually, remember, we had a decision to, um...
Close out the public hearing for the special permit for the Osrd.
Yeah, it really is just preliminary, it's not Osrd. Because we closed it out, and we had the, we had the supermajority at the meeting when we voted to withdraw without prejudice, or maybe it was even with prejudice, I don't recall, the Osrd. So we continued to call it Osrd for, I don't even know why, but it's always been preliminary, and we filed separately. We did submit independently.
Right, you filed the preliminary plan during the meeting.
Exactly.
The board accepted it.
Yep, so what we really...
So in theory, we could, we could decide this with, uh...
Oh, we all got it.
With just a regular majority of the board.
Right. And we actually are, this evening or appearing before, you'd ask us to ask to close it out because we did receive Larry Graham's comments, which are really, you know, very high-level, I mean, overview comments, that we would revise the plan in order to create the definitive subdivision plan because we don't have stormwater, we don't have all the testing information, we don't have all the deeps for the, for knowing where the stormwater detention basins are going to go, or how we're going to design them. And that would, basically, in response to his comments, we have begun our process for developing the definitive subdivision plan. The one thing that I did want to prepare and to present to you is just a general overview. I know that you had received a couple of letters from the Butters seeking connections through this subdivision because they claimed their land was either landlocked, or, you know, they required a separate access. And I realize that your subdivision rules say that you need to provide access, but it's pretty clear the Supreme Court of the United States has said that it's a taking unless there can be proven a clear nexus for the public purpose. So simply providing a private landowner with a right is not sufficient, and they've basically said absolutely constitutes a taking, you cannot be forced, you can't force one private landowner to provide the benefit to another private landowner unless there is some tremendous nexus or benefit to the public interest.
Well, it sounds like something that we can take up in the, in the definitive.
That's my, and that was...
And just about everything.
Exactly.
That we have to deal with as far as Larry's comments or anything. We can take up in the, in the definitive when and if you choose to file it.
And I agree, and I would then respond in a memo format if the board wanted to have, you know, details and provide you with substantial backup as far as, you know, case law, et cetera, with regard to those provisions. I just didn't want to burden you with this.
Does it feel as though that's necessary, or you want to wait until the...
Don't you think that that conflicts with Massachusetts?
No, as a matter of fact, Massachusetts even has a case on it. I mean, it went all the way from Mass all the way up to the Supreme Court, so I have...
Not an easement by prescription when you landlock somebody?
We aren't landlocking them, they landlocked themselves, they're already landlocked. If we were a part of the original parcel of land and they subdivided off, they created their own detriment, but we did not landlock them, we aren't cutting them off. But I do know what you mean, and yes, if you're a common owner and you could create an easement by prescription, so if you are common and you deed it out the back and you try to sell it and kind of hurt the guy behind you, the courts have said, you know what? No, you're not going to profit and harm someone that you sold the land to. This was not that. But I can give you details, and if you'd like, I can give you my...
Sounds like that would be something for the definitive.
Without a doubt. So I mean, basically...
That way, we don't have to take any more information.
And I mean, in this evening, yeah, I don't blame you, in this evening, what we are doing, looking for is to close out the preliminary because we do intend to file the definitive subdivision plan within short order. I look to Richie because Richie's the one with the...
A short period of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, soon.
Very, very soon.
In that case, what I'd like to...
Is that engineer soon, contractor soon?
It's legal soon, so I call him every day, Chris.
Get a phone call every Friday.
Oh.
In that case, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask, who's here for, for this hearing for Lisa Lane? Is anyone here? I'm going to give you a last chance to speak. If you'd like to make any comments, please stand up. I hope you signed the sheet in the back. Let us know what your name is, stand up and tell us what you think. It is a public hearing, it's for you.
I'm Lynn Grosslin. I'm not really sure, I guess on the preliminaries, when it's done, is, what does that, what does it mean?
Basically, what it means is the zoning is locked up, and if the town decided to change the zoning, they have zoning lock for eight years. If we decided to take this area of land at town meeting, and the preliminary was already on file, and we said, we're going to turn this into an area that's...
Presidential A.
Residential C or something like that.
Yeah, four acre zoning.
Four acre zoning or five acre zoning, you need five acres to have a lot, we can do it, we certainly can do it. The only thing is they're grandfathered in for this amount of density.
For current zoning.
Yeah. And the bottom line is, with all due respect, the preliminary, once the definitive comes in, that's when the real details will come in, and that's when all the concerns that we've heard previously will be addressed.
I think they'll be comfortable, nothing in the project is being allowed by this.
Yeah.
Nothing.
They can't get a permit, they can't go to the building inspector and get a permit, they can't start putting a road in or anything. It's preliminary, it's nothing definitive. Are there, sir?
So as far as the studies...
Could you state your name for the record? Did you sign in, sir?
Eric Prizza, yes, I did, Eric Prizza.
Thank you.
As far as the studies, we requested?
All comes in from the definitive.
Definitive.
All in the definitive, yeah. This is 50,000-foot view.
And this has nothing to do with the Concom?
No.
Complete and distinct and separate.
And you, you have a majority, you're going to vote on this tonight as a board?
Oh, I'm hoping that we're going to close this hearing. Okay, any, anything else? Sir, your name?
Kevin Duncan, 561 Street, the Green, they had approached, mapped in for me.
Of course you can, it's a public meeting. You have a question for the engineer?
Where is that area in there?
Where is it?
What is it?
That's a stormwater management area.
Maybe.
Does that satisfy your question, sir?
Uh, yes.
I think I saw a hand behind, could you state your name, please?
Yeah, Jeff Lutz, 13 Lisa Lane.
Is everybody, did everybody sign?
I did.
So that poor Wendy knows how to spell your name. Thank you.
Could somebody fill me in on, on the, the sidewalk that happened?
The Concom did a sidewalk.
Okay. You guys didn't sidewalk?
I, I was there, who else was there? Bob Watts, who's not here, was there, and Tilly, who's not here, was there. Basically, what we did, it was, it was a Concom sidewalk, I used to be on the Concom, and I was very curious about some of the wetland flags. And what the Concom does is they go out, a wetland engineer says, this over here is wetland, this over here is upland, and they put a little flag, a little, a piece of ribbon on a plant or a tree or something.
So were there any surprises, or?
Hmm? No, looked pretty close. Looked pretty close. Of course, I'm not a commissioner, I mean, that's, that's not my decision. I just wanted to get a lay of the land. I was curious about, it's one thing when you're looking at a two-dimensional piece of paper, I've always found that it's a little bit different when you actually have your feet there.
Jill, for the people here for your hearing, could you give a brief overview where you are with Concom?
We have one, it sounds like we have another lady back there?
We were at the Concom meeting.
Your name? Again?
Lynn Grosslin. When they were at the Concom meeting. They talked about, somebody, George Kaminsky came and talked about stormwater drainage, and they talked about the numbers, and they were saying that the numbers, that they had done studies from Cornell and different other places, and they said the numbers were low, and not, and they were saying they were trying to get the town to switch to these other numbers. Would they ever, would these guys consider that when they do the stormwater?
I believe what they're referring to is, when we do stormwater management, and we ask Larry, and we ask the engineers to design stormwater basins and stormwater systems that retain to 100-year storm, the amount of water that is contained in a 100-year storm event is a number that's specified right now and set. Cornell University has done studies which say that that number is really not accurate, it's not great enough, because the 100-year storm event over the last 20 years has actually increased to become more intense. That's something that would have to be adopted by the board, by this board, we'd have to change our stormwater regulations, we'd have to hold a hearing for regulations, that's something we could certainly do at some point, but that, we've, we've got a few hearings going right now, we have the, the bylaw for solar and wind, and tonight, we're opening the medical marijuana bylaw. Planning Board regulatory hearings is probably not on the radar for a little while, I can tell you that. There's a lot to that, it's very deep.
I was thinking, because I know that there was another woman that had mentioned and showed you pictures about how the water, Chris LaPlaca on Rosemary Lane, and how the water from her area was getting bigger and bigger, and this, like, the swamp area is getting bigger and bigger.
Yes, I remember her saying that. She stated that at this hearing.
So I was just concerned because of, thinking of her, like...
Yeah. There, there's, there's a lot of controversy about that, it's very, very technical engineering, and Rich could probably give us a better description of that, but it's not something that we can deal with in this hearing tonight. In the future, maybe we might want to take it up.
We could throw some leeway in stormwater management.
No, using Stormwater Handbook from DEP, and DEP's numbers are antiquated, they've probably got them in 1960.
That shocks me. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has antiquated them? That shocks me.
I just got a text from Bob Watts, he will be here shortly. Another one saying shortly or soon. Again?
So, I'll just give my two seconds.
I just want to ask one second, is there anyone else from the public that would like to make a comment or has a question, or let the record show that Nolan has a comment? Thank you, Rich, I'm sorry.
My, my two-second spiel on the, on the Cornell numbers and using them or not, there are some towns throughout the Commonwealth that have adopted that. There are also studies that refute that, and I think that's why DEP hasn't changed their numbers. DEP has changed their stormwater regulations over the past 15 years a few times, and they haven't adopted those numbers, and I think it's because they're, they're not confident that it's, that it's accurate. So, that's just my, the information I'm providing.
Thank you for, thank you for that, thank you for the background.
And with conservation, we are, we've filed our Anrad, they've reviewed it, they, they being, BSC has reviewed it, changed a few flags, the flags were amended on the plan that's been submitted, along with BSC's report back to Concom, so we expect at the next hearing that they're going to confirm the wetland line.
Issue the ORAD, and that'll be, that'll be done, that'll be locked down?
Yeah, for the defendants.
You'll have that for three days.
And then, and then, obviously, we'd have to file a notice of intent with them, along with a definitive plan to this board.
Any questions?
No.
Howard, any, any final?
No.
Words of wisdom?
What, a motion to close it?
Uh, it sounds like it's an appropriate time to close the hearing. Chris moves to close the public hearing. Is there a second to close? Seconded by Tim.
I can have a draft approval of the preliminary plan at the next meeting.
Great, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Good one, now. Thank you. You got to get a draft together for us?
Yeah. For the 25th, but for the night.
What do we have, 20 days? So, what do we have, 60 days, 20 days? What is that? Lisa!
60.
Jill! I keep calling you Lisa, I don't know.
Lisa, Lisa.
Lisa Lane, yeah, that's got to be it. So, Jill, what do we have, 60 days to issue, issue a decision?
Draft and approve the decision.
Yeah, with a preliminary? I don't even know what it is.
Yeah.
Usually it's 65 days, the days of the closing.
You'll have it at the next meeting.
Think you can get a draft out?
First meeting in October.
You can get a draft out? We'll look for, yeah.
It doesn't, I mean, that's me.
Next meeting is next week.
Yeah, next meeting is next week. I know, next meeting is next week. Yeah, so, sometime enough, tell them.
As the selectmen said, we're working overtime this month.
We'll take care of it.
Meeting every week.
I need a bathroom break, excuse me. Like, take a five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess?
Yeah.
For you, sure.
Five-minute recess. Hi, everybody, and welcome back to the Planning Board meeting of September 18th, 2013.
Yeah.
Took a brief recess there, we're back in session now. And next on the agenda is the release of some M accounts. We have M account 26429, which is Chaplain Hills, and M account 26442, which is Harris Way. Did somebody feel like making a motion to release?
Sure, some moved.
Motion to release.
Seconded.
By Tim, seconded by Chris. Any discussion?
Just so what people know what we're doing, we're releasing $17.29 on Chaplain Hills.
Yep.
That'll break the town if it's a mistake.
I'm sure it's accurate.
I'm sure it is, too, 29 cents, and the amount for...
Harris Way is $3.98.
No discussion here?
Both are town-accepted streets.
Yeah.
And Harris Way isn't, I think they have one lot left, but there's still money being held in bond for it.
One or two lots, yeah, we still have the surety, we haven't released the surety.
Right.
Right, yeah, this is, this is just a review account.
Just a review.
And I'm going to call it all in table.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
There's two sheets for each M account release.
Let's leave. Here's the first of yours. Great, with that done, yes, I'm purposely delaying, hoping that Bob Watts shows up. I got a text from Bob that he is coming. Sorry to delay it, but, um, maybe we can just start it?
We can start it, we have a majority.
Want to open it?
We have a majority here.
Okay, we have a majority. Howard, would you be so kind as to read the public notice for the medical marijuana hearing, bylaw hearing?
In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September 18th, 2013, at 7:30 PM in the Third Floor Meeting Room, Georgetown Town Hall, 1 Library Street, Georgetown, Mass, to consider the following proposed amendments to Chapter 165 zoning bylaws of the town of Georgetown, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by inserting, thank you, Medical Marijuana Treatment Center. The purpose of this bylaw article is to provide zoning bylaw standards for a Medical Marijuana Treatment Center. Medical Marijuana Treatment Center is a nonprofit entity as defined by Massachusetts law only, registered with the Department of Public Health that acquires, cultivates, possesses, including development of related products such as food, aerosols, oils, or ointments, transfers, transport cells, distributes, dispenses, or administers marijuana products containing marijuana, related supplies, or educational materials to qualified patients or their caregivers. Full and complete copies of the draft amendments are available at the office of the town clerk and the planning office. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed amendment should appear at the time and place designated. Persons needing special accommodation should con... Persons needing special accommodations should contact the Georgetown Planning Office, uh, Planning Department, sorry.
Thank you, Howard. Uh, with that being said, we're gonna open the hearing, the hearing has already been opened. Um, essentially what we're doing here, um, as I'm sure everybody knows, the state of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has made it legal for, uh, medical marijuana. Dispensaries are going to be permitted by the Department of Public Health. Any town that does not have a bylaw that purports to say how and where you can place these dispensaries is, uh, well, will be subject to having them anywhere in town. Um, so it's, uh, it's the, the hope of this board that, uh, we can come up with a bylaw that meets everyone's needs, and, uh, zones it appropriately, and, uh, moves this forward, and still respects the, the views of some folks that maybe certain locations in the town would be not perfect to have a dispensary, but other locations would be fine. And, uh, with that being said, I see there's a grand total of four people in the audience. I, I'm presu... I, I'm sorry?
I'm surprised there's not more people here.
It makes three of them.
I, I don't know, it's, it's really not all that controversial. I, I don't think it's controversial, anyway. Essentially, what we have here is, uh, something that makes it pretty much a special permit. I'm happy to say that Bob Watts, uh, is, uh, is here before any information has been taken, before any public comments have been taken. Bob Watts arrives. Out of breath, uh, none, none the worse, at eight-fifteen, is that eight-fifteen? I understand, believe me, I understand. Just so that you, um, understand where we are, we just, a couple of seconds ago, opened the hearing for medical marijuana. Um, we were just explaining to everybody out in the audience that, uh, if we don't have a bylaw, essentially, someone can come in with a permit from the state and put it in a location just about anywhere. I'd like to, like to open it up, start with the comments, I'd like to keep the comments, if I may, to fifty thousand feet. What we have here, and what you've probably received, or downloaded, or picked up at the, the Planning Board office, is a draft bylaw. The board hasn't gone through it, we haven't, uh, found all of Howard's typos and picked apart his prose yet. We will, we'll, we'll beat that all up, but before we do that, I'd like to just hear from, uh, folks in the audience.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to the audience?
Sure.
Can we have a few minutes for the town planner to at least give the people, the audience, an idea of the structure and the content of the draft bylaw?
It won't take a couple minutes, I can do it in thirty seconds.
Sure.
Okay. You ready?
Ready.
Go.
What was previously posted online is the document that we'll be reviewing tonight. So there hasn't been any progress made, because there hasn't been any public hearing to review it. Uh, the article that's presented, uh, for discussion is a draft, and so as such, there will be duplication of some concepts in different locations for the board to decide proper location, uh, different items to be addressed, or certain, uh, certainly things such as distances from residential neighborhoods and things like that. The idea with the draft is to cull the herd, to bring in, uh, as opposed to trying to be add some things. So that's the idea behind the draft.
Try to keep your, uh, your comments, uh, at fifty thousand feet. Uh, if you've read it and you, you think that the fifth line should say "and" instead of "or", maybe we can get back to that at a, at a later hearing.
Mr. Chairman, that was forty-five seconds.
Oh, wow. Um, have you, I, I hope everyone signed in on the sheet in the back. Um, the reason we ask you to sign in on the sheet if you're gonna speak is because you wanna spell your name right for the, for Wendy. And, uh, just state your name, uh, address if you'd like, and, um, just raise your hand.
I just wanted to ask if there's, is there a copy of the bylaw? We were, were not able to find it, I searched online, my partner's sitting at home searching right now.
Really?
Not been able to find it online.
Do, do we have an extra copy somewhere?
Uh, we can give you an extra copy, but it's on the Planning Board website, and it's, um, under Articles for Town Meetings.
Because we, we actually just remitted, again, I couldn't find, it's probably us, but we looked last week, we looked again this morning. My partner's at home looking right now, and it's still not coming up with it, so I appreciate it. You would look as well, right?
Yeah, I didn't find it on that.
Thank you.
Really?
Excuse me, what is your name?
Brandon Terricom.
Thank you.
But thank you.
By all means, I wish we had a few more floating around.
Well, we do if other people want.
Bear, bear in mind what you're, what you're basically gonna see is, uh, we're, we're gonna make some changes to that tonight, I would hope. We'll come out with a, just, just for process, we'll make some changes, we'll come out with another rev, and then I hope that'll be what you see, and hopefully you'll find it. Okay, visited the Planning Board office? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just while they're taking a look at what was just given to them, we do have a, an email from Becky LeBlanc, who is unable to attend. And her email...
Want to read it into the record?
Sure. "I won't be able to attend, I won't be at, I won't be able to be at tonight's meeting concerning the miracle marijuana facility, but wanted to send along my thoughts. Over three hundred seizures a year, think about that. Can you imagine being sick almost every single day of the year? Can you imagine what it is like to watch your child, sibling, friend suffer every day? Can you imagine what it would be like to live knowing a seizure could strike at any moment and trying to plan accordingly? Can you imagine the hope you would feel if the solution was within reach right here in town? Can you imagine if the solution is as simple as giving her access to miracle marijuana? The kind, the kind that doctors in, that her doctors in Boston recommend because it does not cause a high, but causes only relief. Please let this treatment facility come to Georgetown. Please let this happen so that Haley, who has fought this battle for her whole life, might not have to fight so hard anymore. Please help bring relief to this family. Signed, Becky LeBlanc, full Lakeshore Drive, Georgetown."
Thank you, Chris, there's also one from Wendy Osborne.
And there's another one from Jennifer Green.
There's one from Jennifer Green, it says, "Dear Mr. Snyder, as a Georgetown resident and have a relationship with the Osborne family, I wanted to send my support for the medical marijuana production in Georgetown. Best, Jennifer Greenfield."
And it seems to be one from a Wendy Osborne, and, and that's this one?
"Dear Mr. Snyder, I'm writing to express my support in expediting the process of creating this bylaw in supporting Miracle Marijuana Facility in Georgetown, Mass. Clearly, Miracle Marijuana has its benefits, has the different strands help people to heal those in pain, excuse me, has the different strands help to heal those in pain, those with seizure disorders and the like. Too many illnesses come to mind during... Miracle Marijuana has helped individuals cope with their illnesses, is not a cure, but in some cases is the last avenue before being on too many drugs and becoming a zombie from side effects. Being a zombie is not a normal life. If you have time to watch, please, if you have time, please watch CNN special docu-documentary at H T T P colon forward slash forward slash W W W dot YouTube dot com forward slash watch question mark V equal sign V Y F dash F F O A T H G. It is a long documentary, probably as long as its name, or its site. However, it gives you the site, gives you insight as to what Miracle Marijuana is and its history. How the different strands of Miracle Marijuana do not give individuals the high that recreational marijuana gives you. We won't give up hope. Haley, our granddaughter, has epilepsy, and Miracle Marijuana is another avenue to explore since she is not responding to drug therapy. Like so many that I know, if, if the facility is allowed in Georgetown, this child will have a fighting chance to live a more normal and productive life. Not just for her, but her entire family will benefit, knowing that this may take away some of the risk factors associated with being over-medicated, or being placed back into a coma so her brain can rest. How do you tell a six-year-old that she has run out of medication to stop her seizures? That is what Haley, that's where Haley is at right now. She now has anxiety and fear each time she feels a seizure coming on. We have to explore every, every avenue for her. Please vote yes for the facility and give Haley a fighting chance to stop her fears and her parents' fears of losing another life to epilepsy. I've watched my granddaughter Haley seek too many seizures. Please consider the facility not just for her, but for so many others who would surely benefit. Life is too short to waste on bureaucracy and the pharmaceutical companies dictating what is available. Drug companies are not in the market to heal and find cures, they are in it for profits. If you say no, you allow the pharmaceutical companies another victory, as they will continue to rule what drugs are available. With the yes vote, Miracle Marijuana Facility is out of the hands of a pharmaceutical company, but placed in the hands of real doctors. Doctors used to run pharmacy years ago, until the pharmaceutical companies pushed them off, and the doctors then had no say. Thank you for your time, hope for Haley, signed, Wendy Osborne."
Howard, if I'm correct, that's the three emails correspondences, correspondences that we got?
Right.
And there was no more written correspondence?
I haven't received any of those.
Okay, thank you. Uh, back to, back to the, uh, the, the audience, if you have comments, please let us know, raise your hand and say your name and... Go for it.
Sign in, I'm sorry.
Uh, naughty, naughty, you have to go sign in.
Hi, Mrs. Sugarman, I live over on twenty-three Large.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Sugarman, I live on twenty-three Large Road here in town, and I'm just here also in support of expediting what we've already voted for as something that we, we feel is acceptable, and for Haley, and for others. So I'm here in support of, of a medical marijuana dispensary and cultivation center here in Georgetown.
Thank you, are you gonna go sign in now?
Yes.
If I may.
This is the Harris Way, man, I have to say.
If I may. Something that was mentioned in the, in that email, and I think it needs to be addressed. We're not here to say yes or no to Miracle Marijuana Facility. We're here to speak about zoning as to the placement in town. The Commonwealth, the voters of the Commonwealth have spoken. It is allowed, they have further spoken through the Attorney General, saying, "If you try to write a bylaw that excludes them, it will not pass muster."
I see some hands.
Sure.
Go for it.
My name is Pam Lundquist, and I live at Ten Hawk Way. I'm speaking as a private citizen tonight, and, uh, I am also chairperson of Georgetown Cares Youth Abuse Abuse Prevention Coalition. And my heart absolutely goes out to Haley and, and her family, and I really do, I hope that, um, medication comes very soon, it's available, cannabis-based, to help, um, I, that is my sincere hope. Uh, however, I really would like to see a responsible bylaw pass in this town, uh, that is certainly better than, you know, than not. And I have gone through, uh, this, this draft of bylaw, and it's very thorough, and I appreciate all the time and, and effort, and I can see you've done a lot of research and looked at other town bylaws. Um, I just, I have a couple, some questions on it. On page nine, uh, it says...
Howard, can you have another copy of it?
Public Park.
Do you have your packet from August twenty-eighth?
I'm sorry, Kim, what, what were you referring to? Sorry, page nine?
Page nine, um, there's a listing of areas, um, where the R and D facility would be, should stay a thousand five hundred or three hundred feet from, and number six is Public Park. And I'm just wondering what exactly was meant by Public Park, would that, does that mean all recreational space? Would that include the rail trails, sports fields, um...
Well, we, we haven't gotten to that yet, we're, we're gonna have to go through this page by page, and it's probably better to start at the beginning and work our way right to the end.
Okay.
Then at some point...
So, that's just something for you to consider, then, is that, that question?
That's the...
That's fine.
That's the, the, the nitty-gritty that we'll get into tonight, and we will look at all, every word in here.
Okay, all right, is, is this the time for me to ask about the, the nitty-gritty, or make any kind of suggestions to us, or is it not?
Can we do it section by section?
Yeah, if we go through it section by section, and, uh, as we move through it, maybe we can do it.
I, I can, actually, I have three suggestions that I don't think are anywhere in, would you mind hearing them? Or is this an appropriate, my advice, okay? Um, I, I just wanted, and these are suggestions that I got from other town bylaws that I, I noted, that I thought were, were good. Um, that the R and D not be located in buildings containing any medical doctor's offices, or the use of other professional practitioners authorized to prescribe medical marijuana. It's just one thought. These are thoughts that I, ideas that I got from other town bylaws that I've read. Um, number two, there's like, three.
Pam, could you read, could you say that one more time, please?
That the R and D should not be located in a building containing any medical doctor's offices, or the offices of anyone authorized to prescribe the medical marijuana. That it not be all in one, a one-stop...
I don't wanna interrupt Mrs. Lundquist, but, um...
I'm, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Jill Osborne, Agent Muceline.
Thank you.
Regulations, I just wanna say that that's covered in the regulations by the state, so it's not necessarily needed to be repeated in the bylaws, which may be why it was overlooked.
But not that it can't be in a facility where other doctors exist, simply that it can't be in a facility where a doctor that writes certificates exists. So if there's a dentist in a building, you know, obviously, you get to a point where you're very limited in locations with, when you get huge lists, but if it's in a medical facility, as long as there's not another doctor writing certificates in there, it satisfies the regulation of the state. You will never get a license from the state in a building where there is also a doctor writing a certificate. It is not the California model here in Massachusetts. I think that's probably why it's not.
This is in Colorado.
Yep.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, yeah, no, I'll try not to do that again, but... No, that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We'll just try to get together and, and talk about what would be the best, um, possible bylaws here.
Anything else you're thinking of?
Yeah, no smoking, burning, or consumption of any product containing marijuana should, shall be permitted on the premises of the R and D.
I don't think any smoking would be allowed, that would be something of a...
Okay, and, and last...
I believe that's a mistake made as well.
And then I'm done. Um, signage for the R and D shall include the following language, registration card issued by the Mass. Department of Public Health required. So that people walking by would understand that they cannot just, you know, knock on the door.
There's a section on signage at the end, we're gonna get there.
There is, but it didn't include this specific suggestion, so, that's it, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
I, I would just like to say, I, I would love for you to read the regulations, 'cause I think they're gonna make you feel a lot more easy with what's going on here, because the regulations...
You're referring to the state regs?
The state regs, which are much stricter, I mean, almost everything in here is already covered in the state regs, and now they're, now the town needs to propose what works for the town. But the state regulations are the tightest regulations out of any medical marijuana state, and they cover all of your concern. The signage regulations are much more strict than in the state regulations than what are in here. Now, there's a lot of different elements that I understand the town needs to address in order to make it work for everyone here, but it might make you feel a lot better to read those regulations, and it's a, it's a lengthy read, and, uh, and I can email you a copy of it if you want. If you wanna give me your email address at the end, I'll send you some parts of it.
Sure, sure, yes, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Hey, I'm sorry, could you state your name for the record?
Brandon Terricom.
Did you sign it?
I did.
Gary, did, did you want any comments? My apologies, Gary, you're, Gary Fowler, you should've taken him first, because...
No, no, by all means not. I just, I, I, I briefly read it, one, one thing that I'm not sure if it's covered, and maybe we'll get there, and, and that is that it looks like the zone might be all slugged in... it looks like the zone might be all slugged in one. And from what I've seen, from what came in front of us as a selectman, there can be growing centers and then it can be dispensaries. And I think that, uh, a growing area may not always fit in the same zone as a dispenser. In other words, a growing area may need a lot, a lot more, it may be better suited to a commercial area versus the dispensary. Might be better suited to a downtown, town-village area. Or perhaps some areas could suit both. But I just can't see the growing area, I guess, is the biggest thing, being downtown.
Interestingly enough, Gary, um, the, the way I'm, I'm sort of reading this, it, it almost appears that a facility is a facility, and it grows and it dispenses. That's all I'm reading it. Maybe Howard, you helped with that?
As I understand it, this state law, you can, when you become a registered R and D, you are allowed, um, to cultivate, and you also, you, you just can't be a cultivator. You, you need to also have a place that you can dispense it. Those two facilities don't necessarily have to be in the same location. But you need to be responsible from start to finish on, on what this product, uh, is that you-
Seed to sale.
Seed to sale, right. So, whether, um, i- it, the facility is all-in-one or if it's to be located a cultivation center on the outside of town and the dispensary on the inside, um, that's all something this bylaw needs to consider.
The other thing that this bylaw does not do is, uh, it doesn't specify, uh, what, what we would refer to as the overlay map. It talks about an overlay map, but we really haven't gotten to that stage yet. Uh, and that overlay map will create a, what would it be called? A medical marijuana treatment facility zoning overlay.
It's referred to as a medical marijuana overlay district, an MMOD area.
And that would have to be something that we would, uh, that, that town meeting would approve. And that would show precisely where you could have a facility. Please, Gary.
Just one more thing, and, and sort of a reason for bringing that up is I'm also on the economic development board, is that what we're called?
The E C, yeah.
And, uh, we recently, in the last few years, have gotten Georgetown declared, "Help me out here, Howard."
Yeah, economic target.
Economic target area, which means that we, uh, anybody bringing new development into town can get low-interest loans through the state. They can ask the town to work with them on, uh, some sort of tax relief and that sort of thing.
Tax benefit permitting as well.
We could have a tremendous opportunity for some growth commercially in town and jobs and that sort of thing in the tax base, so.
We've already had expressions of interest in come, businesses coming to town that want us set up.
Yes. Yes, they came before the, but it, the party is here. It came before the, before the selectmen. Yes.
So, we didn't forget. We, I remember-
I merely forgot to let Brendan know about that, that Georgetown being that economic target area. I don't know if I was getting the words correct.
Can I see a hand in the back?
Holly Howard, North Street. I'm a registered nurse and former planning board member. Couple things. I- if it's considered not for profit, does that mean we won't get any taxes from this?
I don't have the answer to that for you. That would be something that would have to come from the, uh, the assessor.
I, I do have the answer for that. We actually proposed to you guys to charge an excise tax as long as it's within the law if you were to let us operate here within the city. And it's a nonprofit at the state level, not a 501(c)(3) at the federal level. So, we're not actually tax-exempt. It doesn't work like that. There's actually the most difficult tax issues to, to, to get through when you're dealing with setting up this type of business. But we would not be opposed to giving back to the city. As a matter of fact, in our nonprofit plan, we propose five percent in our first year of net to go back to other nonprofits or to the city. And by year three, when we become revenue-neutral, ten percent available back to the local community. So, the, the town could easily say to us, "Well, we need to see, you know, two percent on sales in order to offset the costs that the police department have, and that the, you know, new traffic might, might increase and, and things like that in order to make it work for the local community." Because we understand it's a, it's a new business, and there are things that we need from the community, resources we will also need from the community. And I think that, that, uh, the city will have an opportunity to make, to make some money out of it.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Well, not entirely. Because what he's saying is they're willing to give back something.
He's referring to one singular business.
Okay, so we're not act, you're not actually, you won't really be receiving a tax benefit.
I, I, I think the best way we can address this right now is to, with all due respect, is to, um, take the specificity out of this company and look at the general purpose. The general idea isn't that this individual is here to come, but we're, we're trying to talk about a bylaw. We don't deal with taxes. That would be the assessor's office.
Okay, but that's just, overall, in terms of economic-
That's a good question.
Great question.
And number two, also, um, clarification. So now, we're saying there could be growing as well as dispensary? And in terms of growing and use of water is another issue? Because, I mean, we have water problems in the town now. And then the other issue that I'm concerned about is, will they be providing their own security? Or do we have to have our police force as security for this particular dispensary?
It has to be a secure facility under the state regs.
Under the state regs, they have to be a secure facility, and the security would have to-
Providing their own security, or the town provides?
Casino-grade security is what I refer to when we talk about our security systems.
We have that too.
Yep. Higher than any pharmacy, any bank in, in the state of Massachusetts.
And to answer your question on the tax, if I may, what Brendan said is absolutely correct. The state requires that the corporation be a nonprofit, and there are certain guidelines on where the money can go and what you have to do with portions of the money to qualify for that. Being, not being tax-exempt does not preclude them from being taxed. Now, there's a flip side to that. Would they fall under the category of an agricultural facility? Possibly, and by definition, that's entitled to a certain amount of tax relief. Except for the retail sales end of it. That portion would not. If that helps a little bit.
Very, very interesting question.
You can always call Jay in the, in the tax assessor's office and ask him. But again, this is for the zoning part of it. Where's it gonna be located? How's it gonna be regulated on the town level? I don't see it being a cost center. As I read everything, I see that the facilities have to produce their plan for security that passes muster with the state regs before they get to what we would require.
As well as site plan review.
Exactly.
Basically, this is gonna be special permit. So, uh, are there any more questions, or?
So, I would like to just share our personal story.
I beg your pardon?
I would just like to share our personal story before we talk about some of the bylaws.
What does that have to do with the bylaw?
What's that?
What does that have to do with the bylaw?
Well, it tell, it gives you a little bit of perspective on where we're coming from.
Where, who is coming from?
My family, because we are potential customer
Okay.
of a medical marijuana dispensary.
Okay.
My daughter Haley is, is the little girl that, that the letters that you received refers to. Um, on September eleventh, two thousand nine, she began the first of what became thousands of seizures. In the four years since her diagnosis, she's tried over fifteen medications. Medical marijuana is the only option she has left. There are no more medications on the market for her to track. We look at Georgetown, and it's a small town. So, when you add in these additional zoning requirements and you aren't separating the cultivation center and the dispensary as having separate requirements, I think that you're overly limiting where these businesses can go. And I don't think that that's respecting what the voters have voted for. I mean, sixty-three percent of Massachusetts voters voted this into, you know, into existence. And so, I just want to urge you to consider the voice of the voters. And, um, we really believe that when, until towns like ours step up and allow these cultivation centers and dispensaries, that patients, potential patients like my daughter, continue to be denied what voters have already voted they should survive.
Thank you very much. Let's get into it now. Let's, let's get into it so that we can-
I have one more comment. Sorry.
By all means, public care. No, no.
I just wanna address the general, gen, the general gist of this. 'Cause I've been to a lot of these, these meetings so far, and we've met with ten towns here in Essex County trying to get this done. And it gets very, uh, it, areas start to get very limited when a lot of restrictions start to get put on it. You know, if you start to talk about like, it can't be close to the rail trail, or it can't be close to things like that, you're, you get to where there's like one tiny little portion of the city that can work.
The, the Attorney General's already said you cannot do that.
Right, right. And I was just gonna emphasize that the, the regulations have a five-hundred-foot rule from anywhere that children congregate. So, it says, it says parks where children congregate, schools, churches, or, um, daycare centers. So, it does cover a lot of that. It gets to, you know, it gets to the point where it, i- if it gets extremely strict, you'll block out businesses that are smaller and local trying to get in here, and you'll leave it to where only a large corporation can afford to come in and buy the land in a parcel that, depending on where you put it. And you'll have other issues on your hands with someone that isn't interested in your local environment and is much more interested in capitalizing on the zoning. Where if, if there's some freedom for some of the smaller guys to exist, you will, you're only gonna end up with at max one location here. We're probably gonna get three in Essex County, okay? Three, three licenses, which will mean you can have three cultivation centers and three dispensaries, based on the fact that we're the third-largest county in Essex County. There's thirty-five licenses total. Probably gonna see four in Suffolk, four in, in Worcester, and you'll probably see three in Middlesex, or, or four in Middlesex and three here in Essex. And I've been working with the Department of Health, and we've got a lobbyist that is giving us information. We've got a legal team that's helping us do this. I've been working on this since November. And the, the issues with the zoning, if it gets so strict, you're zoning out the opportunity for anyone to be here. I don't know what laws you guys have in place that make it so that an area has to be so big for a zone, or it's not legal. But we've dealt with some of this in Danvers, where they wanted to zone it down to such a small location that the zoning board said, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, this isn't even legal for us to zone this to this landlocked spot in the middle of the woods," you know? And so, I just asked you-
A de facto ban.
Yeah. I, I just ask you to consider that.
I assure you, it's, it's not, this board has no intention of doing a de facto ban.
Okay. I appreciate that. I also, we, I presented to Gary, and we did discuss for a long time the difference between what in, indoor cultivation center is and what the retail center is. And we're looking at cultivation centers in different areas that are industrial and are gonna work for our needs, twenty thousand square foot buildings, fifteen thousand square foot buildings. That might end up wherever we can work it out. But to have an option to put a small dispensary location that is where the, you know, we bring jobs, we bring, uh, an opportunity for medicine to be had, and we bring kind of a new, a, a new business into the market would be great aside from the cultivation center. Because if you, if it ends up only being zoned in like the industrial area of town, it may not work necessarily be appropriate for the retail side of business for the dispensary.
So, if, if I may, what you're saying is it would be more practical if you could, for lack of a better word, cultivate in one area of town, but also be, not be glued to that as the cultivation and dispensary. But if you wanted a dispensary, um, in one of those areas at the Georgetown Building Supply, if you will, for example purposes only, that if it met all the criteria, security and all of that, that that would be just a dispensary.
Yep. Because I know that the law states that you have to zone for all three portions of the, it's the manufacturing, the packaging, and the sales. But I think that you're gonna find that a lot of dispensaries in the state, once they're licensed, have their grow facilities, not even in the county, because it's a lot cheaper to get land out in Western Mass with a thirty thousand square foot facility. Or, you know, we're looking at one in Essex where there's a building, and we're looking at one in Newbury Ford. We were looking at one on, on Jackman at one point, but it's not available anymore. But, but that would never be for retail. They're, they're really two separate industries, and the law requires you to be fully integrated because they wanna be able to track everything, see to sale. But they really need to be looked at as two separate businesses. And I think that's kind of what, what Gary was getting at as well.
Don't you think they, they merge the cultivation and the, um, dispensary? If you had a small location downtown, you could have Grow Lux lamps in there, and you could have plants growing.
You could, but the reality of the situation is, we need to supply thousands of patients, so the state would never license-
Forget reality for a minute. I'm talking about the legality of things. That's, I think that's why they may have it combined.
But I think Georgetown could write into their bylaws, "Distribution allowed here. Cultivation allowed here."
I don't see it that way. I see it as, it's a facility, that's a facility. It is, it is, it has to mirror, it has to mirror the state version.
That's what a lot of cities are doing. We're seeing that a lot of cities are zoning it that way.
Could you send us a copy?
Yeah.
Please?
Happy to do it.
Some of them are still going back and forth on it, but this is what we're talking about.
Any that have been approved by the AG?
Yeah.
I do not know, but I was at a Danvers meeting a couple weeks ago, and this is what they were talking about. And, and there was, there's a lot of reality that is just not-
Well, you know, there's a practicality. If, if you allowed it in a certain area, that there's no real estate, real, really any real estate to cultivate it. I mean, the practicality of the matter, then whatever's there is gonna be, the dispensary part of it.
Right.
It's all covered underneath an overlay district, and an overlay district just doesn't need to be in one location. I don't disagree with you.
The overlay district can hold many locations. And as far as the map is concerned, what that overlay district would look like, that's something that we should probably, uh, pay close attention to and focus on after we go through all of this, all of the wording, because we have about nineteen pages to go through.
Well, one comment I was gonna make real quick, and it, it is one of the specifics on here, but the off-site delivery prohibited, that is an important element to the state. I think it would be overturned by Martha Popey. There are a lot of patients who do not have access.
Let us go through this. This is, this is something that is, as he said, it, this is not additive. This is subtractive. Gary?
Just one question, if I may. Harry, and, uh, it's Brendan, huh?
Yeah.
If, if you had a dispensary, what do you see the traffic being, the amount of people coming and going?
We are estimating by our third year reaching about two thousand patients that see us a month, and we think those patients will come in once a month. So, you're, it's not a lot of traffic. It's probably two or three cars in your parking lot at any given time.
I, I guess what I'm going to, is, is that something that you might want? You know, would you want that more in the downtown area versus out in the commercial area? That's what I'm thinking, of the fit of the traffic in that way versus a growing area. So, just, just to keep it in mind.
I think it would probably be akin to the, the amount of traffic-
At a pharmacy.
The pharmacy, or the pharmacy it CVS gets. And I don't think it would be greater than that. And I don't think we see any major traffic jams getting in and out of CVS. As long as it's designed properly.
Thinking of a commercial district where there could be a growing area, would you want that type of traffic down in there? 'Cause many of them are right next to the residential area versus the downtown. That's, that's, that's my-
Again, let's focus on, let's define what the facility is. And then when we get through it, then we can figure out where is, or is not appropriate, right?
If we start at page one.
What an excellent idea. Howard, you wanna walk us through this? We're talking about one sixty-five dash one fifty-six?
Before we start chewing, uh, some of the meat of it, I, I just wanted to outline the whole structure of the bylaw. Some is standard and, and some is a little bit more unique. Each category that we can discuss, uh, purpose and intent, establishment delineation of the overlay district, the scope of authority, how this applies- the scope of authority, how this applies, definitions. And then you get into general provisions of the bylaw, site plan approval, uh, review and criteria. And this is gonna be, um, review, criteria and procedures that are above and beyond our standard site plan. And then, uh, development performance standards, uh, near the end. This is.
I have no idea what that noise is. It's annoying as all.
Noises?
Something running back there.
Doesn't sound healthy.
This is, uh, structure is based upon municipal, other municipalities that are developing their bylaws as well as the standard one that we received from KMP and a couple of other places. So, uh, some of this is just boilerplate language, but we can go through it all and ask for clarification, uh, during discussions. The first section, purpose and intent, if, this is a simple explanation, the purpose and intent of the bylaw. Part A, uh, to provide for placement of RMD. And what I ask is when we discuss the bylaw is that we try to start beginning to get some standardization to terminology.
You need to throw the term in before you use the, the acronym more.
Right.
Yeah.
So. So, um, the RMD, uh, is the registered marijuana dispensary. And.
I think what Harry's saying is to provide for the placement of.
No, I understand what he's saying.
Registered marijuana dispensaries and then just put in parentheses after that.
RMD.
RMD.
Right. Uh, and this is all in accordance with the, the state general law that was, uh, approved. And the language, um, is almost boilerplate to the statute. Part B, uh, adds to the purpose to limit the overall registered marijuana dispensary facility.
Well, maybe we, we should, we could look at this. Are, are we, um, we're, we're looking to minimize adverse impacts of a registered marijuana dispensary on adjacent properties, residential neighborhoods, historic districts. How can we do that? We don't have one. We don't have a historic district. How can we restrict that?
We could, why would you do that? We may have a historic district. You don't know.
We don't have one.
Doesn't mean we won't have one.
Yeah, I, I.
Okay, fine.
I will leave it there.
Schools, playgrounds, other locations where minors congregate by regulating the site and design placement, security and removal of RMDs. Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Great. B, to limit the overall number of registered marijuana dispensary facilities in the town to what is essential to serve the public necessity. Everybody good with that?
Given that was discussed earlier on, the likelihood that there's gonna be anything more than one is minimal, but.
Yeah. Maybe more than one, probably less than five, right? Uh, provisions set forth in this section shall take precedence over all other sections when considering applications related to construction, operation, expansion, repair and or removal of lawful RMD facilities. Jumping ahead to one sixty-five, one seventy-five, ah, one fifty-seven, excuse me. Establishment delineation of a mari- medical marijuana overlay district. Wanna walk us through that a little bit, Howard?
Well, the establishment of the overlay district pairs with the idea of a special permit with the planning board being the special permit granting authority. If the planning board decided that they just wanted to be a permit granting authority, then you would take the overlay district out. All requirements of the underlying district remain in effect. Except for where these regulations that are provided in the bylaw we're discussing, provide an alternative to such requirements. Land within the overlay district may be used either for a registered marijuana dispensary. A use allowed in the underlying district in which the use.
Can you hear? Can you hear out there? Can you hear this section?
In which the case requirements of the underlying district shall apply. If the provisions of the overlay district are silent on a zoning regulation, the requirements of the underlying district shall apply. For example, and this is just an example, if this overlay district in this bylaw didn't consider anything in terms of setbacks, then the underlying district setbacks would apply. If the provisions of the overlay district conflict with the requirements of the underlying district, the requirements of the overlay district shall control.
Howard, do we wanna strike the word area in the second sentence there? Is that appropriate?
Establish a medical marijuana overlay district.
Yep.
Okay.
Right, great. Delineation, B, no property may be subject of, no property may be a subject of a special permit application unless it is been, it has been designated by two thirds voted town meeting. It's having an MMOD zoning classification, the classification of properties as a MMOD and, it should be an and, right? I don't know. Shall be indicated on the official zoning map of the town of Georgetown. Boundaries are shown on the zoning map on file in the planning office. And as of yet, we have not created that, that zoning map.
And, and.
That will happen.
This part B, all it does is state that this overlay district won't be applied to the town map unless the town voters at a town meeting accept it.
Absolutely.
By two thirds vote.
By two thirds vote. And they'll need two thirds to accept this. And we'll need to present that map as well as these bylaws to the town meeting voter. Uh, scope of authority on the third, on page four here. Did I miss a page? Or what did I do?
Scope of.
I'm good.
The scope of authority basically establishes the planning board as the special permit granting authority for RMDs.
And B, any registered marijuana dispensary application may also be subject to review by other town of Georgetown boards, right? Not another town of Georgetown board.
Yeah, that's right.
Another, only one? Another? One other?
By another town, by another.
Only one. Another means only one. It implies singular.
By any other.
Okay. By other town of Georgetown boards would, would work. And our commissions within the jurisdiction to act as the reviewing authorities. Right, authorities? Good?
No, it, it's to act as reviewing authority. There could be many reviewing authority.
Authorities.
Z's.
Authorities.
We're discussing the singular.
Are we?
Because how would a, a, a commission?
The individual board and commissions.
Which is, act as a reviewing board.
They have their own authority.
Like the Board of Health is gonna have authority, some sort of jurisdiction over it.
Okay.
And the reason why I added this part in, um, is because further on, when we start getting into the discussion about home cultivation, then there's gonna be consideration, another board or commission or department in the town issuing permits for home cultivation.
Right. We're really gonna have to separate that out, um, if, if you check your, your supplemental packet. I believe there was, um, a, um, what was it, Westboro? That the, the Attorney General threw, deleted some of their, their wording because it, it actually ended up making it. The, the law was written so generally that basically what happened, uh, anyone that was given a home cultivation or caretaker cultivation permit from the state would have had to have gone through a special permit type of, or. Was it a special permit or a site plan review? I forget, but.
They were, they were requiring home cultivation to go through, I believe, a site plan.
Review, yeah, which I don't think we'd wanna do something like that. That would be a, a little bit of a line.
They're even try, trying to treat it as an accessory use or something like that.
Hmm, I don't remember. Oh, I, I got the impression it was like a, a special permit.
It, it was overregulation.
Yeah, she, she threw it out. At any rate, the, the Attorney General tossed it. But the idea here is to hopefully not have anything tossed by the Attorney General. Find some reasonable regulation that we can deal with.
Uh, one six five dash one fifty-nine, uh, refers to how this bylaw shall be applied. Cultivation, production, processing, assembly, packaging, retail or horse wholesale, sale, trade, distribution or dispensing of marijuana for medical use is prohibited unless permitted as a RMD dispense, uh, under this section. No registered marijuana dispensary facility or any marijuana cultivation facility use shall be established except for in compliance with the provisions of this bylaw section and all other sections of the town of Georgetown bylaws.
Could I put the brakes on you there? One second, Howard. Medical marijuana dispensary facility, I get. But what is a marijuana cultivation facility?
That should come out because we're established that an RMD covers both cultivation and dispensing.
Okay, because that's undefined. So we're gonna strike that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna just call it a registered marijuana dispensary facility, right?
Yeah.
We use the one term. Great. Nothing in this bylaw shall be construed to supersede federal and state laws governing the sale and distribution of narcotic drugs.
Why, why are we striking the cultivation facility? Just because you, you can have cultivation and dispensary in the same location, that's not to say you have to.
Well, we, we, uh, further on down the line, we, um, define what a registered marijuana dispensary facility is. But nowhere do we define what a marijuana cultivation facility is.
You can also, uh, Tim, think of it as a registered marijuana dispensary facility can be just a cultivation facility if they dispense somewhere else. So the RMD is an umbrella term for both cultivation and dispensing.
It doesn't just have the.
But how do you then separate? If you wanted to have a cultivation facility allowed, say in the industrial zone and a dispensary allowed only in a commercial zone, how is it you distinguish that when you've not distinguished them from the get-go?
Well, the state doesn't distinguish is the problem.
Well, that may well be, but we don't have to define it the way the state does.
I think again, I think again, guys, I think what we're looking at is a matter of practicality. If someone's allowed to cultivate it in an industrial zone and they have the opportunity to dispense it closer to the center of town.
Which makes sense.
Exactly. They're not, that same company would be allowed to, the dispensary from what, the way I read our law, the dispensary and the cultivation do not have to be on the same locus.
And it wouldn't make sense that they would be because you don't need
No.
a twenty thousand square foot site to have a marijuana dispensary.
Exactly.
You could have a two thousand square foot site would be more than adequate.
You see the separate.
But you probably need a ten or twenty thousand square foot site to cultivate.
You probably need two thousand square feet.
Well, I don't know if you're gonna bake brownings in the back or whatever.
The thing is, I, I think we don't wanna be restricted. I mean, it may be, it may be better for the, the, somebody who's got this business to have the, the cultivation facility.
Business the way they think.
The way they think it's best.
As long as the overlay district contains that area.
Bingo.
But we may not want to have in the overlay district as, if you just do the, like in marijuana cultivation facility, I mean, uh.
Marijuana dispensary?
Yeah, indeed.
Registered marijuana dispensary.
Yeah, if you don't separate those, I mean, I don't, I don't think you wanna have people cultivating marijuana in the commercial district. I think you, commercial being like downtown or, you know, industrial.
However they wanna do it.
If you get a permit from the state, you, you get a permit from the state to do everything.
Logistically, it would be impossible
Yeah.
to profitably cultivate it. Downtown. We, the, the real estate's not available.
Now, one thing I do agree with.
Brandon, you correct me if, um.
Yeah, well, the only other thing I was gonna say is the licenses limit the dispensary to only be able to cultivate in one location. So you wouldn't have to then worry that they have a warehouse there, but they still decide to do a little grow set up in their downtown retail location. Does that make sense? So the license clearly says you may have one cultivation site and one dispensary site. They may be separate, they may be together.
It would never make sense to try and cultivate in a downtown area.
And the, the only thing you'd have to worry is if the law didn't say that, then you could then, maybe they could say, oh, we're still gonna have this little area in our store cultivation even though we have this big warehouse, but the law says you can't do that. So you don't have to worry about that.
What I would be concerned, uh, with is if we have a single term and the way this is laid out and the way this is, is structured, that it requires everything to be in a single location, that we don't differentiate.
Do you have a copy of the single differentiation?
With the regulations?
The, the use of the registered marijuana dispensary considers both.
A- a- as long as the language isn't such that by, by using a single term, it requires them to be.
But we, yeah, we don't wanna have a dispensary in the industrial zone. We may not, we might be liable with having a cultivation
I could have an email right now if you want.
in an industrial zone.
I have it. It always seems to have a lot of conversations going on here. I'm sorry. I can't follow along.
Well, I just, my, my thing is I, I wanna keep those separate.
Well, I, I don't think you should have an undefined term in the, the state regs don't define what a marijuana cultivation facility is and.
Well, they don't need to.
I have a problem with undefined terms.
So they both fall, they both fall under the state code, but we separate where we want each of those individual cultivation verse dis- versus retailing.
I don't think we can.
So you, you, you may be thinking, Tim, that you wanna create two overlay districts.
One for cultivation and one for dispensary.
I think it makes perfect sense.
The only thing is.
Don't think you're gonna fly with that one. I don't think you're gonna fly with that one.
Telling potential businesses how to run their business.
I'm gonna get it single.
I don't think that we'd want to have a dispensary in an industrial zone. I think it would be fine to, to have a, essentially a cultivation area in an industrial zone. That's why we need to separate them for purposes of zoning.
So you'd be prohibiting dispensary in an industrial zone?
Correct.
Well, I disagree with you completely.
What, what you're thinking?
Well, you know, hey, guys, there is a definition for marijuana cultivation.
Is it a marijuana cultivation facility?
No, but.
Okay.
It's the process.
If there's a definition for marijuana cultivation, then the facility would be that location on which marijuana cultivation takes place.
Oh, maybe we should jump ahead and look at it.
We have marijuana cultivation in our definitions.
On page three of the Westboro supplement.
I guess actually the, the zoning for an industrial doesn't allow retail distribution anyway. So maybe that's self limiting. If it has, if both, if both the zoning.
It would be special permit though.
This is an overlay district too, so you.
Yeah, it would be a special permit for that.
I just see it as a very different, you know, a cultivation center being in a different area than a distribution.
I don't think the state makes that distinction. They you'd be putting, you'd be putting the, the owner of the facility in, in a no win situation because he'd be getting a license from the state to grow and dispense, and you'd be saying you can only grow.
Here, at this location, that's all you can do.
Right.
You can go dispense wherever, wherever else you can get permitted to do it. I just think it would be very strange and probably not a very bright idea anyway to have a dispensary in an industrial zone. I don't know. It's my thought. I'm one vote of five. Let's move on.
Well, um, are, are we all, are we all good on, uh,
I'll vote against that word.
Getting, getting rid of the term marijuana cultivation facility because the registered, let's look at what a registered marijuana dispensary facility is, how it's defined. Maybe, maybe we can go in that direction. We're going to page five. We're just flipping forward for just a minute. A registered marijuana dispensary facility.
An RMD.
An RMD. Um, actually, you know what? I don't even see it.
Go back.
A registered marijuana dis- dispensary.
Page five on the bottom.
Also referred to and known as a medical marijuana treatment center means a not-for-profit entity registered under one oh five CMR, two, uh, seven two five one hundred. Means a not-for-profit entity registered under one oh five CMR two uh seven two five one hundred. That acquires, cultivates, possesses, processes, including development of related products such as an edible marijuana infused product. Aerosols, oils, ointments, transfers, transports, sells, distributes, dispenses, order, administers. Marijuana products containing marijuana-related supplies or educational materials to registered qualifying patients or their personal caregivers. Unless otherwise specified, RMD refers to the site, or sites of dispensing cultivation and preparation of marijuana.
Uh, first thing, Howard, I think it'd be a good idea since it's known as a medical marijuana treatment center to um consolidate. These two uh definitions.
I agree.
Say that again. It's referred to, RMD is also referred to as a medical marijuana treatment center, which is the previous citation in in here. So they should be consolidated.
Mm-hmm, because the state uses that one, that's that's the reason we have to work it.
That's fine.
And also, Mr. Chairman, it wouldn't be a bad idea to add in a definition of marijuana cultivation. Which I believe is the.
I understand, let's.
The definition used in chapter ninety four C.
Let's let's do, let's do one at a time here, uh, registered marijuana dispensary and the medical marijuana treatment center. Definitions, how are we merging, are we doing it by reference?
I'm doing it by reference, I I need to see if I can combine those, there may be a reason why they're separated now.
Well, could we at least say that a registered marijuana dispensary, under that, we could also say also known as a medical marijuana treatment center.
That's what it says.
Also referred to and known as medical marijuana treatment center.
Where are you seeing that?
Under the definition of registered marijuana dispensary.
Okay, okay, great, I missed that, great.
The state had redefined, they changed the term.
Yeah.
They changed the term.
I I get it, the 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 law said one thing, the reg said something else, I get it, I just wanna make sure we caught it.
Fewer words.
Yeah. Um, now, what were you saying about um cultivation, Chris? But not a marijuana cultivation facility. That's something completely different.
Definition encompasses marijuana cultivation related to RMD facility. So it does carve it out.
And you know, people, if it if it's gonna be near their house, they're gonna feel differently whether it's a cultivation. Building versus a dispensary, I mean, people are gonna be less concerned that somebody's. Got a secure grow house near the property within the setback, I mean. As long as it's beyond the setbacks than if it's a dispensary, cuz you don't get traffic. In and out of a cultivation center like you would, it's really different, it's just a whole different ballgame. Whether you grow it or you dispense it.
I don't think the state is really, I don't think the state is 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 separating that out.
Well, they don't have to, that's up to us.
I I think you, I think you're you're killing any chi- any chance of of a of a successful business model.
What do what do you think as an app as a?
I think that it's sometimes possible, for example. In Providence, Rhode Island, they just opened a large center called the Slater Center, it's right off ninety five in downtown Providence. They do both cultivation and dispensing there. I think it's possible because they they bought an old post office and it's a huge facility and they're it's they 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 like that model of all in one. I think it's possible to do your dispensing at a cultivation center, but if you just have a small cultivation center, it's not possible. Or if you just have a small dispenser, it's not possible to do your cultivation. So I think that if you were to zone in two separate areas, you might say. Area A works only for cultivation, area B works only for dispensary, but you know, there's a crossover here in area C where it works for both. You know, or 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 where they, where both A and B can exist in one.
What about? An area where you can have cultivation and dispensing and an area where you can just be limited to dispensing only.
That's what I think is the is the best way to go.
Comment here?
Yeah, I I see an area in town such as. Down where the hose factory was, access road area, there's not a lot of neighbors that.
Oh, industrial zone.
The other area over there, where perhaps both would fit, okay? But I again, a- as Tim is saying, I don't see like in the Tenny Street area or the Jackman Street area, I don't see a dispensary fitting down there. Right. Growing area fitting into downtown, right, so I think there there's room for 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 the two overlays. To combine in certain areas in our town.
It might be too hard to define that, but it would be nice if.
Yeah, and and this is, this is the issue.
If we could, I think perhaps industrial areas are already not gonna work because you can't. I mean, if you have a dispensary, that's retail, retail's not allowed in an industrial district.
That's just it, I I think if you went by the model.
So maybe it's self limiting, well, then it's up to us to say no.
I would think if you would go by the model that you have for other types of industry in town, you gotta treat it as an as an industry. And if you don't allow it with some of the others, how could, what you're saying is how could you allow it for this?
Right, now, it's interesting in Georgetown in particular, on Tenny Street, that um industrial building. By the straightaway there, that Jerry's Auto Service is now a retail repair place. And now you've got a karate or kung fu or some sort of gymnasium sort of, some sort of training. I mean, that's not an industrial use, our industrial use is beginning to erode in this town as to what it's defined as. Supposed to be being used for, and this maybe just further erodes that, and is that bad or good? I I I don't know, it's the direction that we're going.
I I think there could be a little bit of a combined area, but we, what you're saying is we don't have it. While we needed a such.
Yeah, but we have it happening anyway, yeah.
You start getting into three overlay districts, you're gonna start.
Right, I think that would be, I don't think we could do that.
I think what you can do is is you need to consider that they come in requesting location for a dispensary. How's the zoning code enforcement officer gonna consider it? Retail, medical, you can add into the use schedule, which is a discussion for later. How you want those things to be located, a dispensary, medical marijuana dispensary.
As long as we can loc- as long as we can separate them in the use schedule, I'm okay with that. I mean, essentially.
Separate.
I I don't see as big a deal with, I guess, I don't think you should be growing in a commercial district in the downtown or anywhere.
Well, I.
I don't think you should be growing.
But I don't think that that economics would be there for them to think of that. We've got a small.
You can generate a lot of. A lot of marijuana in not that big an area.
Right, and and from what I understand, they need a large area.
He reads a lot. Cause I know your house is a bit off the road.
I kinda smells kinda funny when I drive by Gary's house, wonder what's going on in the farm.
My next one is with something.
So you're wearing D.
Right, we were just getting to D, and RMD shall be authorized only after that town meeting creates a medical marijuana overlay district. And then by special permit only in districts provided as set forth in the bylaw, chapter one sixty five, section A dot three, use regulation schedule. As I was just mentioning.
Right, so what that does is it allows, that's the connection between the written in the use schedule that's in the back and the overlay.
Okay, then I, then I'm good with that.
We we can develop that further too.
Uh, E when land within the MMOD area has been approved by actions out meeting. As having an MMOD classification, it may then be developed or redeveloped by the owner, if an owner or an applicant active on commission to the owner likes to proceed under the bylaw. Section one sixty five, one fifty six through section one sixty five, one sixty two shall apply to all new construction. Reconstruction or expansion of existing buildings in newer expanding uses. We'll go on to definitions in one sixty, one of the things that I I did want to um. Pull out is marijuana cultivation. And I'd like to really look at that because I wanna make it clear uh for the attorney general. That when we're talking about marijuana cultivation, we're referring to. Facilities that are cultivating, and I really wanna separate out the um. A homegrown version, or what's it called, the uh the hardship cultivation um um. Permit that's given to individuals and caregivers, um, we really need to pull that out. The the attorney general was very, very pointed, because remember what we're doing, this is special permit. We're not gonna have a special permit for anyone who gets a hardship certification.
If you look, they have the attorney in on page six of the Westboro uh decision by the AG. The AG specifically threw out. The wording, personal cultivation by qualifying patients or cultivation by personal caregivers on behalf.
Right, they tried to include that in their definition of marijuana cultivation. And this is uh this is identical, I mean, we were given, it's according to this, marijuana cultivation process of propagation. Including germination.
Harry, what you're saying, marijuana cultivation, after cultivation related to RMD facilities, period.
Mm-hmm, okay, in that fourth, fifth line there?
Personal cultivation by qualifying patients or cultivation by personal caregivers on behalf of qualifying patients or others.
Delete that.
Wait a minute.
Either delete it or.
Or.
It does not apply or is not subject to. A special permit.
Right, it's not subject to, yeah, to the.
I I think that's that's it.
Where do we go with that?
Are there other rights?
We need to, we could either.
Put in accept.
Um, say, uh. Personal cultivation or others shall be under the purview of of the Board of Health or the Board of Selectmen or something else like that. Or you just take it out and put it in a whole separate definition.
And put in a whole separate definition for um, what is it, um, home cultivation? Hardship cultivation, thank you. Hardship cultivation.
But if we don't have jurisdiction, then we should just say we don't have jurisdiction, that goes to somebody else.
Well, we don't, I wouldn't personally want jurisdiction, but I would wanna make sure that if someone was growing it in their own home that. The police would be aware of it and the Board of Health may.
How however, whatever the police and the Board of Health, whatever the the state says.
Even the state regs, correct me if I'm wrong, say that it needs to be in a a somewhat secure.
But again, is that a zoning issue?
I think.
I think that your your, the reality of it is, is if you have an RMD in town, you're not gonna, they're not gonna allow any home cultivation in that that in that community.
I understand.
Because of the availability.
Because of the availability, I think it's really set up for.
But it sounds to me like it's gonna get so mangled here that it's not gonna be a successful business model, to be perfectly honest with you.
Mr. Chairman.
So I'm thinking we're gonna have hardship cultivation, we need to be pretty sure.
You might be crossing into a territory that that doesn't satisfy the attorney general if you end up. Putting extreme limitations on.
That's not our intent.
Yeah.
I don't want extreme limitations, I just wanna make sure that the chief of police knows where these facilities are, and I wanna make sure that.
Does that comply with like HIPAA compliant? You have you have patient rights at that point.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, that's why I don't wanna touch it.
But that's my point, Harry, is i- if if that isn't a zoning issue anymore, the hardship uh cultivation. Then we should say that. These these regulations do not concern them, so go read something else.
It would.
If I may, please.
If you put in there accept and then use the attorney general's language. Specifically authorized hardship cultivation at a primary residence when a registered qualifying patient's access to RMDs is limited. You're done. Cause one, and then cite one oh five CMR seven two five dot zero three five. Which is an application for hardship cultivation resident, registration must include EIEIO, and it goes right through. What it is, so if you accept that, which is what the AG said, you have to delete this. Because you're not allowing, you're excluding that.
So what what are we doing here, we're deleting this, we're deleting personal cultivation by qualifying patients or cultivation by personal caregivers.
Yeah.
We're deleting that.
Right.
And we're adding in something here to marijuana cultivation? Or are we coming up with a whole nother definition now?
No, this is to to marijuana cultivation.
Adding that language to the definition of marijuana cultivation.
You got that?
Except. Specific, you had that, that sentence on page six?
Yeah, of the Westboro, the AG.
You got it, mm-hmm, cool.
Great, uh, building inspector, that's pretty straightforward, building permit, I don't think we uh. We we might wanna look at that because this really has nothing to do with solar voltac, ground mounted solar voltacs. So. Um, I think we could stop at the local zoning by bylaws. And we can strike the word including those governing large scale ground mounted solar voltacs, right?
Yeah.
That work, designated location, locations designated within a medical marijuana overlay district in accordance with mass general laws. Where RMDs may be cited by special permits at locations is are shown on the town of Georgetown overlay map. Uh, da da da, that's good, marijuana, how we're defining it is that that definition, you're pulling that right out of the state regs, right?
It's right out of ninety four C.
Yeah.
Chapter ninety four C, which is the drug.
Okay.
Oh gee, I was a narcotics officer, remember?
Okay. Uh, medical marijuana treatment center, we've already discussed that one, we good with that, that definition?
The treatment center and the marijuana dispensary, I'll see if I can define it, but there may be a reason why I didn't.
Okay, uh, special permit granting authority, that seems to be straightforward. Uh, site plan approval. That's done before, zoning enforcement authority and um. For the purpose of this bylaw, the zoning enforcement authority shall buy, shall be, shall be. The town of Georgetown zoning court enforcement officer, right? One sixty five, one sixty one, general provisions, an application for RMD. Shall be reviewed by the SPGA for consistency in the provisions of this section. All proponents required to provide a site plan approval app to SPGA along with compliance or a written waiver request. To each of the following requirements in order to be deemed complete.
Could I back you up?
What's up, where are we?
Well, on your cultivation area, and if you are taking a few different districts, if I'm back on page four on on the one sixty five, one fifty nine. You you mentioned there, processing, assembly, packaging.
I lost you, Gary, I'm sorry, where what what page are we on?
Well, if you go back to page four.
Okay.
Okay. One seventy five, one fifty nine, section A.
Section A.
Okay, you mentioned there cultivation, production, processing, assembly. Where would you cover the, where would those things come in, I guess is one of the question is, when you get into definitions, would that come in with the cultivation? And.
They're all RMDs, that's all packaged under the.
Okay, if they had a cultivation place, they'd be allowed to do that, I get that, that's the question I've got.
It's like a medical, like a med- like medical facility where you could have a doctor, you could have a dentist, you could have a pediatrician.
Question was, it wasn't being limited, because when you look at the cultivation, it looks like it's limited and it and it stops kind of at um. Refining, uh, under cultivation now on the page five. Sale refining or use as an ingredient, then it says in further manufacturing or process. So that that means it's covered there at the at the site?
Cultivation.
That's actually a good point, because it isn't really clear, there's there's a fabrication. Or manufacturing, transformational process, a processing activity as well. You grow it and it doesn't just pop into whatever, however it goes, something has to happen. And presumably that would happen in the cultivation facility so that it would be transported to the dispensary. In saleable form. As opposed to buds and and whatever, going over and then being being fabricated um at the dispensary. Or is that something we care about?
Um, it's-
Am I jumping the gun?
Again, it's, it's, it's all under that general heading that the state's calling a, a, an RMD.
But that is not cultivation.
Right, and it's not dispensing.
The definition of cultivation ends
Right.
the process of propagation, including germination, using soil, hydroponics, or other mediums to generate growth and maturity. The intended process of bringing a plant or other grown products to maturity for and then it's why the cultivation is bringing the plant to maturity for the following purposes.
Harvesting, sale, refining, or use as an ingredient.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's not saying that cultivation is the sale, refining, or use of an ingredient in further manufacturing.
Mm-hmm.
That's the reason why, that's the reason why it's allowing the cultivation. The process of cultivation is bringing the plant to maturity for the purpose of harvesting, sale, refining, or use as an ingredient.
You wanna add the word purpose in there, is that what you're trying to say?
No.
No, no, wait a minute.
No, 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 I'm just trying to say that cultivation doesn't mean that where you grow it is where you
Produce the product.
Produce the final product.
And, and actually, under the Registered Marijuana Dispensary section, that being both the cultivation location and the dispensary location, it, all it says is somewhere in there is where you produce the product, but it doesn't say where.
But, but it also doesn't say that you, i- i- it's inclusive, and it says that this is what we're calling a registered dispensary. And we're calling it a dispensary, but you very well may just grow it here. Very well possible you just, it'll just be a grow facility, but it's being called a dispensary.
It would be part of that dispensary.
Right, exactly.
Which is cultivation, production, and-
You can have a facility that is qualified as a registered marijuana dispensary and not be dispensing anything, you're just cultivating.
Just cultivating.
That's, that's just, the RMD is just what your per, that's your permit.
Right, right, right. It's the umbrella term for those three processes.
And you're not restricted under it
Right.
to any limitation.
As to where you
And you're all-
what function.
But what I'm saying is, if you were looking to have, because there was talk about having an area for cultivite, cultivation, you may want, not wanna, you may also wanna allow the processing of it at that facility also.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying, so we're-
Because at some point, it has to be packaged and shipped.
That's yes.
I mean, I think that's handled at the state level, too.
Call it a one facility.
It is confusing.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's regulatory stuff.
That's why we get the big faps.
Um, Howard, one sixty-five, one sixty-one. Walk us through this just, um, relatively quickly, we seem to have A through, what is it? Um?
General provisions are, are non, uh, specific criteria and procedures of either the site plan or the special permit process. It's a little bit higher elevation than on the ground, and it refers to how, uh, this bylaw is gonna be administered, how it complies with other zoning laws, ordinance, and regulations. It allows for the board to set up any consideration of fees, um, submission, uh, requirements and required documents, things such as safety standards, financial surety, proof of liability insurance, locations that are eligible. Then you get into the off-site delivery prohibition, which we can discuss, signage, visibility, cultivation activities. These are all at a higher elevation of what the bylaw is gonna consider.
Mm-hmm.
And again, you can take some of these things out if you think they just need to be addressed later on in site plan.
Does anyone have, um, any issues with that?
Um, one, that I've come, where it says, it may be
Right.
It says, um, go to B one. May be erected upon issuance of an affirmative special permit and site plan approval.
Decision by the SPGA.
Right.
You need the special permit.
Wouldn't we wanna put that it may be
A medical marijuana treatment center would be considered approved upon the issuance of an affirmative? Because the erection has to, if it's to be built, it needs to come from the-
It's still more, somewhere in there, they have to, we've gotta say, you gotta go to the building inspector and get a building permit.
Right.
The way it reads right now, once you get the special permit, you can coast that building.
Yeah.
And, and that's why I'm, I'm thinking, shall be considered approved on the issuance of an affirmative, uh, special permit. You, you don't need to refer to anything to the building inspector.
Yeah, that, that goes without saying, because we talk about applicable state, local.
It could also be removed.
Yeah, it's kind of a given, isn't it? I mean, we talked about the whole process for the SPGA, we could just kill it, can't we? Anybody have a problem getting rid of it?
Get rid of it.
The whole one there, medical marijuana may be erected, I mean, it's kind of, goes without saying, this is the permitting process, right?
Go then.
Yeah.
Then try to mess around with it a little bit?
Yeah.
Kill it. All setback yard buffer screening requirements applicable in the zoning district in which the installation is located shall apply.
That's already in there.
Mm-hmm.
Again, this is an area of duplication, so you can take two out.
Yeah, you can kill that, right? Any security fence or surrounding facility should be setback from the property.
That's discussed later on in-
Yeah, we, we deal with that later, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay, this, this is almost a little bit redundant, lighting.
That shouldn't be.
Lighting, we cover in, in other ones, right? We can get rid of that. Medical marijuana center owner, operator shall maintain the facility in good condition.
That's discussed later on as well.
Yeah, so we can, we're gonna kill one through five there?
Yeah.
Drop down of fees, site plan approval. Site plan approval application for medical marijuana must be accompanied by the filing fee established by the SPGA. General all site and structural plans and nationally prepared, sealed and signed by a professional civil engineer.
This is boilerplate.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I was looking for the word, thank you, it is boilerplate, this is. Uh, submission requirements, required documents, that's pretty much, um, um, well, that's, that's unique. Almost looks like you're-
What I wanted to have done here-
Let's look at that, let's focus on E, submission requirements, and I know it's getting late and it gets painful, but-
Why would we, what? Why wouldn't we just state that this-
What's a chocolate?
This is medicinal chocolate.
You don't need to speak into this. This is so that the members get a sugar rush to, to pay attention.
Yeah, we, we've got a few more pages to get through, yeah.
I'm in charge of the water, he's in charge of the chocolate.
Somehow we keep us alive and moving.
What I wanted to add into here was that if they came forward for a special permit, was that they would create some type of proof and documentation for the board to review that these are the available sites that we could propose our RMD to be located in, as opposed to just saying, this is where we wanna put it. So, you got the overlay districts, this is the site we wanna go on
Mm-hmm.
in that this site is possible, because these are the distances from a residential district or other thing. It just shows that they've done a thirty thousand to a thirty foot type of study. Now, you may consider it to be too much, or you can consider it to be appropriate, but that was the intention of it. I mean, to inventory the, the potential sites, evaluate the proposed site in terms of larger contacts by taking care to identify eligible locations or detrimental connections.
As described in section one sixty-five, one fifty-three, where is that?
That's not in, in here, that is in here.
How, do we, do we require
Eligible locations.
in any site plan review?
No.
No. What, 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 eligible, what was, was the reference to eligible locations? As described in one sixty-five, one fifty-three M.
Because if we establish, say we establish the whole industrial area, for example, as the overlay district for our RMD,
Okay.
some parcels in that overlay district will not be appropriate locations.
Because?
Because they border a residential district.
Ah, okay, okay.
So, they need to show, out of this overlay district,
Okay.
we're chosen this site because it meets all of your-
Oh, you just, in, in other words, that you're just making them identify that it is an eligible location within the district.
Right.
And, and what is one fifty-three M, again, because, am I?
Fifty-three M.
Because that's another article, that's another, something else in the zoning, one fifty-three M.
Yeah. I'll have to double check on that, what the reference was to.
Yeah, that's, that's-
You know, find it in a second.
Is that something that's a little later on?
Yeah, it's actually an I, it's next page, eligible locations.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay. So, we can change that ref, right?
Yeah.
We'll pull it out, figure out what it is.
One sixty-five dash one six one I.
Okay, great. Eh, beneficial or detrimental connections to surrounding land uses.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you very much. The zoning district designation for the parcels of land comprising the project site. Submission of a copy of the zoning map with the parcels identified is suitable for the purpose, proof of liability insurance satisfies one sixty-five, one sixty-one G.
Bottom of page eight.
Bottom of page eight, G, okay. I'm, 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 I'm missing something here, Howard. General provisions, submission, oh, this is all submission requirements, okay. It is getting late, huh? Public outreach plan, a public outreach plan? A public outreach plan, including a project development timeline, which indicates how the project opponent will meet the required site plan approval notification procedures.
Right, so the idea is that if they were to come in, they can have a timeline established of this is when we're gonna do a formal application, this is the date of all the butters. It's in a lot of ways redundant to some of the other processes that are in place. Uh, I added it in, I think it can be taken out.
Anybody have a problem with moving it?
None whatsoever.
Okay, well-
Why did you add it in?
Seemed like a good idea at the start.
Right.
Happens a lot.
Okay, I just didn't know if you had any reason why you wanted it in.
No, just wanted to see if the board wanted to get some type of document from, because it's a special type of application we're considering, or if they think it's unnecessary.
There would be public hearings involved in the special-
The standard notification would add one, so.
And it's George, and you're probably gonna go before the concomitant. Legal documents, copies of existing and proposed legal documents pertaining to the public and private easements, covenants, agreements, and permits affecting the use.
This is again, something that's commonly expected in the site plan, application process.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't know if you wanted, bring it, attention here.
Is, is, is that the functional equivalent of when we require?
Title?
Yeah, that we have title or-
Title, a lease.
Right.
Signed lease.
Okay, everybody good with it?
That's in our, that's in our site plan rates, isn't it?
Right.
So, is it redundant?
It's duplication here.
Is it redundant, wanna kill it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would.
I would say, yeah, that we should just reference whatever definition we have in, in any exterior, external document about
I'm thinking just kill it because we're-
I would say take it out, because you gotta produce it in the site plan.
Yeah, any change in the site plan review?
Losing number six, I love it.
We don't wanna have to go back and, um, and include it here.
The more simple this looks, the AG is gonna
Yeah, really.
Say, yeah, you're right, do it.
Number seven, SPGA may waive the aforementioned document requirements, so we might as well kill that, right? As it seems appropriate.
Wave any document requirement?
Yeah. Well, well, no, maybe we better leave it in.
You leave it in, because you wanna be able to-
Wanna be able to waive it for strange situations.
Right.
Safety standards. Upon request by the SPGA, the owner and the operator shall cooperate with local emergency services in developing an emergency response plan. God, that's sad, a second bottle. The owner or operator shall identify a responsible person, goes without saying. Prior to issuing to the building permit, Medical Marijuana Treatment Center owner or operator shall provide a written plan, including but not limited to a project summary to the Town's Board of Selectmen, local safety officials, including the police chief, fire chief, and building inspector. Uh, the SPGA will confirm adequacy, emergency access, safety procedures with local safety officials. Unauthorized access, medical marijuana treatment centers shall be des- designed to allow access within the area of the RMD to authorize personnel as well as state and municipal emergency personnel only. Why, why is that under the heading of unauthorized access?
Why don't we just categorize it as access?
Emergency access? Would that be-
Access. Just access.
That only authorized
Authorized personnel.
as well as state and municipal emergency personnel.
Call it facility access.
The idea is, is I think that the board is wanna, is going to want to receive some type of information because this is such a heavily secured and such a, a, a facility, that if, after hours, if there's a fire, if there's break-ins and things like that, how are, the response, how's it gonna be allowed? The liability insurance and financial surety, um, that's in the range, right? That, that's at the state, and you're just gonna be asking for a, a proof of the-
Basically, financial surety.
So.
You got half a million, you got it, right? Oh, we're talking about
The removal of it later on.
Removal of the facility. Wow.
If they go out of business.
So essentially, you have a warehouse, it's got a bunch of dirt and a bunch of lights lit.
Sure will sell quickly to auction.
But it's specialized equipment.
Hmm?
It's specialized equipment.
Pro light room, excuse me.
Well, all, all the ventilation systems, though.
HVAC. We do speakers in the men's room, right?
And say, we got cameras, we've been in.
Should we just get through this section and? Yeah, we're about halfway through. We, we can continue the discussion to next Wednesday.
The owner shall provide a security sufficient to cover the cost of removal.
It's getting late, you have to punch it there.
Yeah.
Do you, can I ask, do you ask for that type of surety in many other facilities?
Is that in, let me ask you a question, is that in? Is that clause in the Westboro regs?
That's something I don't know, but I can research and have an answer for this.
Because I, I would say that, as it's written, could be construed as. An overburdening of a, of an applicant.
Okay.
What we were referring to, Chris, and especially where it says, the estimate of cost shall be prepared. By the facility, facility operator and a licensed architect. And shall include a mechanism for cost of living adjustments.
What do, um.
I'm thinking that might be too onerous, that the AG would throw that out.
I'm thinking that it's just like ridiculous, I mean.
And, no, I mean.
I was trying to say it in a nice way.
I mean, that's why you're an attorney. A lot of words for that kinda thing.
I know, you know, do you have that in like possibly a cell, cell towers, I think you, you might want something of that sort, that you don't want it to fall down.
You don't want it to fall down, that's something, we have it for solar, and I, I think that's where we're getting it from, but.
What about the?
I'm trying to think of a, of, of some kind of a functional equivalent of.
You require sureties for subdivisions.
For the building until it's built. And then, and then we give it back once the street's accepted.
Exactly.
But, um, if we were, if we were building or permitting, uh.
Say a kayak manufacturing.
A kayak manufacturing facility, we wouldn't wanna, we wouldn't take a bond for it. If, I mean, this is.
Because there were chemicals there, too, I mean.
I can see a bond during the construction to make sure it's built according to spec.
Always, always, that's surety though.
I'm not, thing is for the removal.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not, um.
So, our final act for the evening.
I got one better than that, I mean, when they're building the facility, they don't get an occupancy permit till it's done right. You don't even need sure. You don't get your occupancy permit. Keep building, go ahead, but you can't go in the building, you can't use it.
Right.
Because the, the zoning enforcement officer, the building inspector won't give you an occupancy permit if it isn't right. He's probably tearing it all down.
And how would, and how would you put a price tag on that? I mean, taking a bunch of money.
Yeah, and that's.
I'm perfectly happy with it coming out.
Whatever flancer in the facility.
I agree.
Let's just hear what Bob has to say about that before we just.
There's a speaker, Nicky, get him out.
Oh, it's, it's too loud in there. Some kind of vacuum or something going on in there. Just hold off, please.
Well, why don't we go on to something else?
You wanna go on to something else?
Chandler didn't wait for him to.
Or do you wanna just say that there's three of us and it's, it wouldn't matter anyway, there's three of us?
Yeah, let's say that.
That's a scrub. H is gone, right? Here we go, now we're into the meat of some of the matter here. Eligible locations.
Yeah, library, I think that's a good.
Any RMD facility. Privated under this section should be located only in a zoning district that's designated for its use. Within this zoning bylaw, no RMD shall be located within. This is where I'm a little, this is a huge list that. Seems to keep it pretty far away from anywhere in town.
Right, but again, if, if an applicant comes in and says, if I followed the strict letter of your bylaw. I can't find a location.
I can't find a location, yeah.
Then you can say, okay, we're gonna back out.
How about the AG might have a problem?
The AG would, the AG wouldn't allow that.
How's the AG know if we have a property in town, or we don't have a property in town? We won't know unless you pay me to do a study, find the locations, or until an application comes in.
Well, just so you know, we killed, uh, we pulled H out, H, we gang.
Separation.
Talking about eligible locations now?
Yeah. Distance requirement may be reduced by twenty-five percent or less. If the applicant demonstrates the RMD would otherwise be effectively prohibited within the municipality. So, if the applicant comes in and says, I followed every one of these, and I can't find a location, the planning board can say, okay. We're gonna change the distance.
Uh, well, the first thing I think we have to look at is, you seem to have a thousand, five hundred, or three hundred.
Well, the AG's approved five hundred.
Right.
Linear feet from the property line. Basically, if you go to page nine of Westboro.
They said that five hundred's okay.
Five hundred feet.
Okay. Do, do we wanna be that limiting? Do we wanna go to three hundred feet? Allow it to be a little closer?
I would think you'd wanna go to a smaller amount, solely for the idea that Georgetown has some, a very small commercial, right, in industrial area.
Yeah.
Be pretty hard to even in three hundred.
I think, the AG set the bench, set the benchmark at no greater than five hundred.
Yeah. I think a hundred feet is too little. And maybe three hundred feet is a little closer to what you wanna.
So, you wanna go with three hundred feet?
You wanna go with three hundred? Does, does that feel good?
And they may come, an applicant may come in and say, if we stick to three hundred, there isn't a property, but if we go to two hundred.
I understand.
These are the properties.
What's the real difference between two, three, or five hundred feet, an extra thirty steps for somebody to go that distance, it's not.
Why can't we put in there without?
What I'm not understanding is where, where do we, where are we able to waive it? Where, where do you find that?
Yeah, that we can waive.
Yeah, that we can modify that if, for special circumstances, I mean, somebody's doing ninety feet.
The distance requirements may be reduced by twenty-five percent or less. But only if the applicant demonstrates the RMD would otherwise be effectively prohibited within the municipality.
And I would put at the beginning of that, I'm sorry, Bob.
Except, take out the no. Except as otherwise provided, medical marijuana treatment and dispensing facilities. And shall be located with three hundred linear feet of property line, three hundred linear feet.
You're reading Westboro.
Yeah, but, even though Westboro is written like that, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah. What, what we have is no RMDs use, shall be located within, and I think we're plugging in three hundred linear feet of a property line. With the following, zoning district activity or use occurs, whether within the municipal borders of Georgetown or adjoining, adjoining municipality, in case somebody's right on the border.
Yeah, it says no RMD use, and does, does that mean their footprint?
The use isn't allowed.
The, the, the use refers to the, the locus, the actual zoning property.
The physical footprint of the building.
Of the zoning use.
The, the, the RMD use. When, when you locate a, a business onto a piece of property, that piece of property, the use of the property is now as a business.
So, it's to the edge of the property line of the RMD.
So, the overlay would have to take all of that into consideration.
Yeah.
Because your overlay is going to be on the use, scheduled uses, correct? So, the overlay would have to comply with that. Yes?
Okay.
So, they'll.
I'm sorry, I didn't nod my head.
They'll be a defined area that's not exclusionary.
Agreed.
That's all I want, that's, that's it.
One, one other question is, section fifteen there, paragraph fifteen, uh, what's in this, what is an establishment licensed under chapter one thirty-eight, section twelve?
I have no idea.
What is that?
Haven't even gotten there yet. But, good point.
Yeah, I believe that's a boilerplate example from other applications.
So, it's like nuclear.
I don't recall off the top of my head.
Nuclear waste storage facilities.
Zaku Power, what is it?
It is boilerplate, the AG's.
Well, I'd like to know what the heck it is before I'm recommending to tell.
I've got a, I've got a feeling that it, if you read, um, Westboro, where it says. Any correctional facility halfway has a similar facility, or any establishment licensed under provisions of chapter one thirty-eight, section twelve. Can you get online from there? Bob, can you get it on there?
I don't have any, I don't have my machine.
You don't know how to get on, I can, oh, you know something?
You can get it on the web, I can, I can find it.
When does a Monday like?
I, I do think we might wanna revisit section, section I, because I know this is something Pam specifically was interested in.
One thirty-eight, section twelve, is a common victualer.
Or bar.
A bar?
A victually duly licensed under.
Restaurant.
It's a bar.
Hotel, pub, brewer, keeper of a tavern.
Okay.
Where they sell alcoholic beverages, or only wines, malt beverages.
Now, we're really restricting the.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you guys have got it, because they're all wearing the city right now.
You just can't locate it within three hundred feet of a bar.
But the AG allowed that.
Or a restaurant that serves.
Or a restaurant.
You'd like five hundred feet.
Or an April, or, you know.
Now, that's, that's silly.
No, not all restaurants are common victories, only restaurants that serve alcohol.
That might be right.
Yeah, they have a license, liquor license.
Maybe. I'm sorry.
It's the only ones I'd go.
I go to restaurants. Are there restaurants? Some restaurants I go to don't serve alcohol.
They don't last long. Well, now, if this, if this, if we have a three hundred foot limit from these places, do we, can we override that as being the specific?
Yeah.
Granting authority?
Yeah.
Then why even put that in there? Why put something, why put in a limit like that, and then, like, who is it a limit to? Who's limited by that?
Everybody except those who ask for it not to be limited.
But they have to come and ask, ask us anyway. They can't put a facility anywhere without coming and asking us.
Well, like, all other site plan, um, regs, you have certain criteria for the site plan.
You can ask for a waiver.
And then you can ask for a waiver.
Everybody will be asking for a waiver.
Is the purpose of this to?
Three hundred feet from all of those things is.
Is the purpose of, of fifteen to protect people going into the bar, people, protect the people who are buying the medical marijuana?
To keep the drunks from trying to break into it.
I don't know, allocating aside, I, I don't, I think that could go away.
Yeah.
I think a lot of it can go, we don't, video arcade facilities and. I, I don't know what, I don't know how you define a similar facility in which minors commonly congregate. What is that? Richdales, is that the Dunkin' Donuts? What is that?
An ice skating rink.
How do you touch that?
An ice skating rink, a bowling alley.
We don't have a bowling alley, okay, a bank?
I think we should leave it as.
All those kids hanging around the bank.
Building childcare facilities.
So, let's go through the list, item one. Residential district?
Shouldn't be in a residential. School, public, private, elementary, vogue.
We might wanna wait for Pam to, because she, she seemed to have issues, questions that were related to this.
Well, you know what?
This isn't the end all.
No, this isn't the end of it. We're gonna come out with this again, right?
Way true.
Well, Howard's gonna define it, and they'll get a little better, well.
Fair enough.
Let's go to, uh, no entitlement or vested rights to permitting, that sounds like, um. That sounds like, uh, boilerplate, right?
Yes.
Okay, off-site delivery prohibited. With all due respect to certain business models, I, I think maybe I envision a business model where. The facility is in an industrial area, it's in a secure, tight location in a large building. Uh, it, it reflects more, um, a production facility, a growth facility, uh, large scale. And even though it will be, quote unquote, a dispensary by, by law, they probably won't have walk-in business. It will, uh, things like trucks pull up, load, and deliver. That's how I envision it. I think.
The dispensary?
Oh, the state regs.
You have, they really wanna make sure that patients have access, and there are just too many patients that need home delivery.
Oh, and I'm, I'm sure they could pull up and, and do that as well.
Yeah, I just think that if you leave that in there, you're opening yourself to being rejected.
I'm, I'm, I'm advocating that we eliminate.
I agree.
Oh, I agree, okay, that's three.
Go back to it.
I'm sure that the state also has some level of regulation.
Yeah, it's two drivers per truck, locked facilities, routing maps, everything.
Like a ranked, like, like a ranked truck.
Yeah.
I know.
They, you would be amazed at how tight the delivery regulations are, but trust me, they cover any concerns you guys have.
We'll be shipping it in from Colorado before you know it. Signage, this is one we have to touch to.
They're getting punchy.
Any medical marijuana treatment facility shall comply with the requirements of the town of, town sign bylaws at all times. The town sign bylaws, really, while it is getting linked, um, may not be adequate to address the, um. Uh, the unique nature of a facility such as this.
And, and it, it takes, it takes that, and then this adds on to it.
Yeah, I think that maybe what it should be is, um, I don't know if you can do it, but. I, I'm thinking that that's part of the special permit process, the signage, and, um. Essentially, they have zero rights to signage at all. I, I just, I'm picturing something like, you know, whether a sound bylaw is, I mean, you can do twenty percent of the building area, I'm picturing something like the, the hilltop. With the cactus there.
And cows.
Yeah, and I, I, I just don't, I don't think that's appropriate, I don't think anybody, I, I don't know, I mean, some people may think that's appropriate, but I just don't.
Might I suggest?
There's enough holes in our sign bylaws.
Instead of what's printed there.
Mm-hmm.
It's a, something to the effect that notwithstanding any bylaw, any existing bylaw to the contrary. Any and all signage must be specifically approved by the special permit granting authority.
Yeah, I like that.
Any and all signage must be approved by the special permit.
Did you get that one?
Yeah, we'll get it off the video recorder.
Aaron might give it.
Great. You earned your fee. Yeah. I'm gonna double it.
Have a chocolate.
Have a chocolate.
See, the chocolate works.
Um, visibility.
We're eating chocolate up here.
It's the only way, you're gonna make it to ten thirty, that's for sure. Visibility, there should be. I know, I don't need the Bob, but we've got a few more, few more, Bill. Hang in there with us. There should be no visual proof or visibility of use activities, products or treatment occurring within the premises, that makes sense. And now we hit cultivation activities, and it seems to be.
Go back.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
Cultivation defined in the bylaw.
As defined in this bylaw, by any qualifying patient, personal caregiver, or medical marijuana treatment and dispensing facility. In any location other than where specifically permitted, shall be disallowed. This disallowance shall include cultivation, even where proposed as an accessory use by any qualified patient, personal caregiver, or RMD. What, where, where did that come from, Howard?
The AG just specifically blew that away.
She blew that away anyway, right? So, let's kill that. All right. That just doesn't seem right. I guess the AG and I agree on something. Good for her.
Wouldn't you?
Good for her. Um.
Our city governor.
Pardon?
Our city governor.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, one sixty-two, special permit review procedures in criteria. Excuse me, so this is, these are the procedures, and we just went through.
General provisions.
General provisions. SPGA may grant a special permit in a site plan approval or require the certain requirements, be met as conditions of approval. Those certain requirements may or may not be outlined in the following section. May or may not be outlined in the following section? Huh? Am I tired?
Yeah, I am too. I'm done.
I may or may not be outlined in the following section?
Let me take that out.
You know, that's, that's consistent with Murphy's Law on law.
Murphy's Law on law?
Yeah, what you get in the big print, you're losing the fine print.
Yeah, bro. Procedure, the planning board shall be the special planning granting authority for R M D. I thought we already dealt with that.
Right, again, there's the idea of, do you want it here, or do you want early on under general provisions?
It's our, there's no sense in repeating it.
Yeah.
I think Howard's question is where does it want?
Yeah.
Don't know where do you want it to be.
Excuse me, where is it most appropriate? I mean, I, I don't believe that belongs with procedures and criteria.
Let me ask, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Is there anything in our special permit procedures that? Is not included in this list? Howard?
Is, is there anything in this list?
No.
Yeah.
And then the, the reverse, the reverse of that. Is there anything on this?
I did not take everything from the special permit process and put it in here. This is meant to add to the existing special permit process. So, well, is there, are there things in this bylaw that are duplicative of what's in the special permit?
No. Not, not directly.
Okay, then we need to go through them all.
Well, I'm looking, complies with minimum visual impact by controlling off-site visibility.
Parking, storage, or other outdoor service areas.
We already do that in special permit.
That's, yeah, but that's.
Provides adequate stormwater management and other utilities consistent with functional requirements of Georgetown. We already do that, don't we?
That's true, they're safe to.
Alright.
Maxes my, maximizes. But what I'm saying is if you set this as your criteria.
This is your criteria.
That's your criteria.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And I mean, it certainly does take a lot in.
I just wanna make sure that.
Minimizes.
It includes everything that we already do for special permits.
Is there anything?
That's up at the top.
Is there anything unique to an R M D that would, or, or, or could we just say? Everything that, that we do in a regular, uh, special permit plus this?
That's, that's what it's structured as.
It doesn't hurt to reiterate it in this way, I guess.
As long as it's not limiting.
No, it's not. Nuisance is not expected, provides adequate access to each structure for emergency service equipment. It's not a common sense facility, be constructed and operated in a manner that minimizes adverse visual safety and unbiometal impacts. Uh, doesn't create nuisance to a butter, the surrounding area creates any hazard, including but not limited to fire, explosive fumes, gas.
And, and what I'm saying.
One thousand other things.
Is, are there any, are, are there any other elements in special permit and site plan review other than those?
Oh, over and above this?
Cause that's your, that's your criteria.
Because, right, because we're saying that.
They only have to meet that.
I understand, I understand.
And I'm saying if we have.
Well, what more would you wanna read?
If we hold everybody else to, to, to more. Under the site plan.
Well, but it says, it shall consider but not be limited to these. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, if this recapitulates what our standard, uh, criteria is, we don't need it here.
Reiterates it.
These are specialized to an R M D.
Minimizing glare from headlights and lighting intrusion. Isn't that?
We don't actually.
We don't articulate that.
No. I think it's alright. I'm, I'm more concerned about the special permit conditions following that. Uh, we can, special permit granting authority shall impose, shall impose conditions, shall. Uh, reasonably appropriate to improve site design, traffic flow, public safety, protect water quality, air quality, and significant environmental resources. Preserve the character of the surrounding area and otherwise serve the purpose of this section.
Why mandatory language?
Why mandatory language?
Shall is mandatory.
I, I understand. In addition to any specific conditions.
Gives us the authority to do it. If we just, if we choose to.
Right.
If you just put shall in there, then it's gonna be.
Shall include the following conditions. Okay, well, that, that's a good thing because it gives everybody a standard.
It has to be addressed. I mean, we can, we can say.
It locks us into addressing it.
What you've got here is fine.
Right, we have to say that we address this and in the decision, when it's handed down, it says, we looked at hours of operation, we looked at.
Air quality.
Permit holder, um, shall file a copy of any incident report. Okay, and one twenty-seven, and that's just keeping it within, um, the state regs. Permit holder shall file a copy of any summary cease and desist order. Again, this is all, all of these things are reiterations of, of the, uh, the state law, the state regs. Okay, permit shall lapse within five years of issuance.
Do you wanna?
That's interesting.
Do you wanna have, uh, a life cycle to the special permit or just keep it for the life of the use?
Yeah, I, I don't understand why you would.
To see if there's an increase in business or, or business model change that may be affecting how the use operates. I know it's not common.
Yeah, it is a little different. I mean, we don't.
Isn't there somewhere else in here that the special permit's gonna be reviewed in five years?
No, I've been asked a lot of points.
I'd rather see it reviewed in five years than expire by operation law. Or may be reviewed.
There aren't, there aren't any other special permits that I know of in Georgetown that have to be renewed.
No, I know, they, they don't. They just sort of keep going.
I think you're asking for trouble.
I mean, the term expires, it, it just, the plug is full.
So why don't we just delete five?
Is there anything in there that?
Okay.
The wording is in the, the bylaw that any violation. Could be caused from revocation of the special permit.
I believe so, we are on it, then I don't think we need that.
Special permit shall be limited to the current applicant and shall lapse if the permit holder ceases operating, the R M D. Special permit shall lapse upon the expiration or termination of the applicant's registration by Department of Public Health. And I think we need to.
Spell it.
Pull that out, yeah, Howard, we had Department of Public Health, I don't know if they mentioned it anywhere else.
No.
It says D P H here. Permit holder shall notify the zoning enforcement officer and the S P G A in writing within forty-eight hours. Of the cessation of operation of the R M D or the expiration or termination of the permit holder's registration with the Department of Public. Okay, application, in addition to the materials required under. And we're gonna insert the appropriate section of the bylaw to identify the applicable rules and regulations, right?
Yeah.
The applicant shall include a copy of its registration as an R M D from the Masterful of Public Health. Detailed floor plan of the premises, proposed R M D that identifies square footage available, describes the functional area, including areas for. Preparation of M I Ps and you need to pull that out. We need to, um.
It, it's spelled out earlier on, but do you?
What is that again? Marijuana infused products?
Products. Um, you don't ask for a detailed floor plan on anything else.
And we do on, on site plans, we do.
Do you really want that to be in the public purview?
I'm not. Right.
Anybody can be here and know.
Well, it, it's public record anyhow with the building, but.
We, we do that all the time. We did with Crosby's, we did it.
The bank? Do it with, uh.
We have it with the, we did it with the bank.
Alright.
I mean.
I'd want a detailed floor.
Yeah.
Alright.
I mean, cause site plan review gets triggered.
For security, though, you might not want it in public.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I understand that. You know, I don't have a problem with that part. But these are all. You have to balance the equities here. There's no other way for us to move on it? And actually, when you're going for a building permit, you're gonna have to file the detailed floor plan and that's public record.
Yep.
Bear in mind, the other thing that happens is when you walk in for an application, when you file your application, all, all these documents are gonna get sent to the chief police, the police department, they get sent.
You'll want them to have them. You want emergency personnel to have them.
But we're talking just the application itself, because we're looking for comments, they look it out, they pull it out and say, wow, there's, there's a problem here, there's a problem there. Then they can come to the, then they communicate with Howard written so that we have the, the information.
But your detailed floor plan is gonna, is a public document, not only through the planning board, but through the building inspector, we never get a building permit.
Bank of America did it. I mean, we see them all the time, you know, site plan.
Right.
You know, so they're the combination of the state.
Yep.
Including areas, detailed site plan, uh, that include the following information. Oh, yeah, and you also need it for separation, in case you're, for, because you have to have all your, your production facilities separated by, uh, from your distribution, from your, yeah.
For security purposes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so you're gonna need that. Detailed site plans include following compliance with requirements for parking and loading places, lots side, frontage, yards, heights, coverage of the building. All other provisions of the bylaw, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement on the site, location of the driveway openings. Convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement off the site, if particular, if vehicular and pedestrian traffic offsite can reasonably be expected. Can reasonably be expected to be, to be substantially affected by. Can reasonably expected to be substantially affected. Say that three times fast, go ahead. Can reasonably.
If this hour, I can guarantee there's gonna be all on traffic charges.
Right, we're gonna need to deal with something like that, yeah.
Signalization.
Why do you need substantially?
Of course, a lot of this is boilerplate and just blah blah. I mean.
If it's minimal.
Traffic offsite can reasonable be, be expected to be affected.
I agree.
Expected to be greatly affected.
I, I'd rather just see.
My onsite changes.
I don't like substantially is, um, is pretty vague.
You know, I guess another way to consider this is, is what we did when we did the site plan review for the donation. You took a look at the traffic patterns and the circulation and how things were gonna boil around the site. That's the, uh, intent of this section.
I'm gonna make a motion to continue this till the next meeting, cause I'm done.
Yeah, kinda baked myself. I'm kinda baked too. Well, we, we got a lot done.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Oops, sorry.
Thanks for staying and advising us, and it's helpful.
Howard, when, uh, when's the next continuation? When's the best time to continue this to?
Um.
I mean, given that the warrant will be closing soon.
Next meeting. Close the next week. Um, yeah, I, I don't think this is gonna get into special town meeting, cause it has to go in for the attorney to review and so forth, so.
Well, the board doesn't seem to be willing to go forward with it. Unless you wanna sit here tonight and get this done for the next one. Other than that, you know what?
You can go for next Wednesday.
That's what I'm saying, the next meeting.
Wanna go for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, who's making that motion? Motion by Tim to continue the public hearing. Hearing to, what's the date, I'm sorry?
Nine twenty-five.
Nine twenty-five thirteen at seven thirty. And Chris, your second, Chris seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You and Ann. Okay, hang on, let me flip the page.
Now, do you want me to take the changes now and reissue to the board for next week?
Wait as well.
You have time?
Yeah. Can you red light it? I can do all this tomorrow.
And what I'd really like you to do is like, get rid of some of the redundancy, I mean, there's, there's a lot to it that just.
Right, but again, it was to see if you wanted it in this section or another section.
Well, pick a section.
Yeah, pick a section, yeah, that's what we paying the money for.
Yeah, but you know, I hear these voices that say, why did you put it here?
Well, wait a minute, the last guy that said, they, they have medication for that now, Howard. The last guy that said he heard voices. Uh, in a hotel. Gary, can we have a sterile corridor with, uh, front door?
So we're gonna pick this back up somewhere around page thirteen.
A middle or page two.
Motion by, um, by Tim to adjourn, seconded by Chris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You and Ann.